Are we expecting anyone else to be coming late?
Ms. Atchison indicates she'd be coming late and Ms. Race is out of town.
Yeah, I knew, I knew she was gonna be gone. So, and I know, um, uh, Ms. Nixon is like six thirty is even kinda hard for her. So, we had that conversation and we scheduled it. All right, we will gavel in, um, for the special meeting of the Cedar Springs City Council Thursday, March thirtieth at six oh five. Please rise and say the pledge with me. I pledge allegiance to the
Under God, in the
I will call the roll, Ms. Atchison, Mr. Gross.
Here.
Ms. Hamel.
Present.
Ms. Nixon. Ms. Powell.
Here.
Ms. Race. And Mayor Conley is here. I would at this time take a motion to excuse our folks who are not able to attend. Ms. Atchison, um, Ms. Nixon and Ms. Race.
I'll make that motion.
So, for all those in favor. Aye. All those opposed, they're excused and we understand for a special budget meeting. That is, then we're not really, we're not voting on the budget, we're hearing the budget. And it's an exciting budget and our finance director has like pictures and everything. It's really amazing. So, so, um, we understand that it can be hard to get here for a special meeting. All right, at this time, public comment. The council welcomes and encourages the public to speak during the public comment and public hearing portions of the agenda. However, council policy is to hear the public comment and to act on the public comment at this time. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If after communicating with the city manager, no resolution is reached, the concern will be elevated to the mayor and eventually to the council for action. Any citizens wishing to speak on agenda or non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. If you would like a response, please state your name and address for the record. You can give your address to the city manager because we know that we are on YouTube and we don't expect them to dox your address on YouTube. So, any public comment? Anyone on Zoom?
Yeah, you have one.
You sure are. You are on the agenda, I believe, so.
I'll be brief. I'm Frank Walsh with Walsh Municipal Services and the former city manager here in Cedar Springs. Um, I just wanted to, um, first of all, I have not been back as in its capacity since being city manager and I was city manager here for six years. And I just want to show how much, um, to the community, how much it meant to me to get my career started back in the nineties. What a great opportunity this was and how kind the community was to me. I made plenty of mistakes along the way. Um, I learned how to better treat a fire department from Chief Frazier. A better understanding of that. But, um, your new fire station, your new library, uh, the town really looks great. And, uh, you and Mr. Womack and the community should be proud of the way this community looks today. Um, there's some amazing things going on and I also hear there's a large sidewalk project coming too. That's
Is.
Like an eight hundred thousand dollar sidewalk. So, congratulations to, um, where you've been and where you've done. It's, uh, it's amazing. And, uh, I look forward to if there's any questions I can answer tonight, uh, for you. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And yes, you should take a little spin around town and see all the orange flags. Quite a sight. So, but yes, it's gonna be fabulous when.
I got the new bridge.
Yeah, we have the new bridge over Main Street that has a walking sidewalk on it. And the whole heart next to the library with the amphitheater, you should look at that too. It used to be the foundry. It's just, it's spectacular. Yeah, we're very fortunate. All right, moving on, adoption of the agenda. I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Okay. Any comments, questions, discussion? And we, we don't need to, we don't need to have a roll call because we're not voting on anything in it that has money. So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed, we have an agenda. Moving on to public hearing. The Heart of Cedar Springs Park Improvements Project Motion to Approve Resolution twenty two, twenty twenty-three dash, do we have a number? Zero six, a resolution to approve submitting the proposed Heart of Cedar Springs Park Improvement Project to the Department of Natural Resources and to commit to matching funding. This is the one we need, um, some letters for.
Yes, so I've been receiving a few. Um, somebody's sixth grade class sent me about a dozen letters. So, I really appreciate that. That was great. Um, yeah, we did get, um, docked a few points last year for not having, uh, a num- a sufficient number of letters of support. Um, but this, you know, even though we did a very similar, um, submission of the DNR last year, we were very close to getting it last year. You know, the library issues, the multifamily issues have really distracted me from getting this submitted. Uh, it's gonna be really tight getting this submitted by April first. So, Madam Mayor, I do need you to stick around and sign some paperwork after the meeting.
Absolutely.
But I will do my absolute best to get this submitted and this would be phase one of the Heart of Cedar Springs Natural Playground, uh, grant with the MNRTF through the Michigan Department of Natural Resources.
And we were very close to getting it last time.
Yes, so.
We're like one away, if I remember.
There were, there were a couple that were around us, the same points that did get approved and we didn't. Uh, but I think ultimately what the real problem was, was they had about eight and a half million dollars allocated for the MNRTF grants. Normally it's an eleven to twelve million dollar grant program. So, if they had had those extra three million dollars.
We probably would've gotten it.
Would've gotten it.
Do they, how much do they have this year?
They haven't stated yet.
How many letters is sufficient?
Uh, that's a good question. If I knew the answer to that.
How many did we have last time?
Like, three?
The problem, the problem with last time was we had a number of letters that were, uh, from council members, planning commission members, that kinda thing. And what they're really looking for are citizens.
Community.
Yeah.
That was known last time though, too.
Was, but.
And so, we knew that any letters that we generate wasn't gonna have much weight anyhow, so.
Yes, um, but it's obviously, you guys know a lot more people in the community than I do. Of course, I asked everybody I knew and I did get some letters and may have written a few, but, uh, yeah, we, that was great from, um, forget the teacher's name, but sixth graders writing letters. So, that was, that was great.
They were so cute.
I'm, I'm guessing we could maybe talk to some of our local Girl Scout troops that were
Yeah, that's.
Selling cookies up at the library.
Problem is, this has to be submitted in two days.
Yeah.
And I've got all sorts of other things I gotta do.
Yeah, I wasn't talking about you. I'm just saying that was, this is a note.
Cute. We should've made it like a library competition or something.
Maybe next year, but don't be.
Okay, so any other discussion on this? I will take a, oh. Yeah, oh, it's public hearing. So, I need a motion. We have a motion for the public hearing. Yes, no, I don't. We need a motion. We need a motion for the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to, uh, open the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, any discussion then? We kinda had our discussion already. That's okay.
My discussion is, my part of the discussion is we have, uh, the overcost on the road paving. We have the extra money for this. And that's gonna take, I'm looking at probably four hundred thousand dollars off of our fund balance.
So, I believe the, the, the commitment on this is three hundred thousand.
Right.
Um, but you're right, there's a lot of things that are adding up. But we've done an excellent job over the last seven years of increasing our fund balance.
Mm-hmm.
We're at about fifty-four percent right now. Uh, one point four-ish million dollars on a two and a half million dollar budget.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at right here. We have the well, the paving, whole street.
Which are, are taken out of our major street funds that are.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the, the street is budgeted separately.
But we had an overrun of hundred thousand or more.
Yeah, it's a lot of money, but that's out of a different fund.
Okay, it's not gonna be part of the fund balance.
Now, we, we are still paying for the Pocket Park at Seventy North Main, um, but Darla and I worked on that a little bit.
The clerk is raising her hand. I think she would like us to vote on the hearing.
Okay.
That's why I say, I think we need to actually vote on the hearing. This was, so, all in favor of having a public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. We have a public hearing, so, conversation.
Uh, yeah, so with the Pocket Park at Seventy North Main, but, uh, I think what we're gonna do is eliminate the bathroom up front because that's a huge cost there. Um, and the way the, the grant monies work out, um, we don't wanna be committed to the extra hundred plus thousand dollars for the bathroom if it's not part of the grant requirement. That one's actually gonna go down to four hundred thousand dollars about. Um, and two thirteen of that is covered under the grant.
And then a piece of that comes from the DDA, right?
Yeah, thirty-ish thousand dollars.
I was gonna say twenty-five or thirty.
So, there's the possibility we get this grant and then we'd be on the hook for three hundred-ish thousand dollars. But even at seven hundred thousand dollars, um, I don't have a, you know, the math, but we'd have a seven hundred plus thousand dollar uh, fund balance on a two and a half million dollar budget. I'm comfortable with that.
We aren't planning on eliminate the bathrooms that we were gonna try to create by the library, are we?
Oh, so that would still be part of.
That's part of this, this
Correct.
overarching one.
Right.
This is for the, what he's talking about is the Pocket Park that was the DDA for the.
Downtown, yeah.
And I guess we could even decide to put them back in at some point if
Well, the.
We felt like we had the money.
Yeah, so the current plan is to run all of the necessary water and sewer and everything, just not the building itself.
Hmm.
It's amazing how expensive those are.
Oh, yeah.
But so have it ready to go and then allocate funding at a later time.
Okay. Well, I was just kinda worried about draining our fund balance with the well and the street and the park and whatever else is gonna come up.
The well is coming out of the water and sewer fund, right?
Mostly paid for out of ARPA dollars.
Okay.
So, that should be a fairly cheap proj- cheap project.
Okay.
That's part of the new.
That we have to run out to the, uh, new.
That would be taken care of as part of the tip of fund that's gonna be put together by the brownfield with Jared Belka and the developers. I know, right? It's like we planned.
I know. Jeez, now I know everything about that.
But that was the reason on the, um, they're gonna pay the upfront and then there's the tax piece of it that we were concerned that if we had too much of it, we wouldn't be able to fund our fire and so on. So, that was the piece where they were gonna do a pass-through, which is where we had, we had counselor, um, Nixon doing lots of maths. So, you know, trying to figure out what that needed to look like.
Situation with that one was the, the two point five, was it two point five five mils? Whatever it is, we had to pay to someone.
Uh, well, that's part of it.
It's part of it.
But I'm just saying, okay, the fact that they're paying that. We are now gaining a water system in the long run, what about way on property? We are not collecting taxes on anyway. So, anything they're paying through is a plus, if that's a fair statement. Because before that was all under Solons, they were collecting taxes on it, we were not. It will be taxable property for us. But, uh, we weren't getting anything now, so we're gaining the water system that they're paying through and and for, uh, the other expenses that they were passing through.
And of course, the big piece of that is it closes the water loop.
Yeah.
Which.
Major plus.
I mean, that's a huge, like, we need to close that water loop.
So, Ms. Powell, if you are comfortable, uh, this is a public hearing, so we do have a couple of members of the public. We'd like to ask them if they have any thoughts.
Yeah. Do you have thoughts on her, on our grant?
We also have, uh, two people online.
Okay.
Lisa S. or Kami, do you guys have any thoughts about this, uh, public hearing?
I'm, I'm glad you guys are discussing it. Is that the kinda thoughts you would like from, from me?
Cam, could you say your name for the record, please?
This is Kami. I am the, uh, Cedar Springs Library Director. Visiting you via, yeah, my home. Um, I would just like to say I'm, I'm thankful that you all are discussing improvements to the community and any and all enhancements around the library are much appreciated.
Does the letter from the library director count?
Uh, I don't know. The library director's been very busy with.
I know she has.
I, I did write a letter for the sidewalks. I'd be happy to write a letter for this as well.
Okay, that would be amazing. It's for trying to get more park improvements for the park next to the library.
Yep, I'd be more than happy to do that.
Staff could jump on that too.
Yeah, you need it in two days.
Uh, I need it sooner than later.
So, by tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, is that what I'm hearing?
Supposed to be in Detroit tomorrow. I'm gonna be sticking around after this meeting to do some of this work. Um, and then I'll be in the office probably all day on the first, trying to get it done, so.
Okay, well, I'm gonna be at the library on the first, so I will get it to you tomorrow. And then if you wanna see any changes, I will be able to do that when I get back from the extravaganza.
I'll appreciate anything you can do for us, Kami. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, happy to do it.
You always are a rock star.
Always.
Thank you.
Always. Okay, any other discussion? All right, hearing none, then we, we need to close the public hearing. I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
They're doing well.
Okay, well, there's only, there's only three of you.
We'll go for that.
I, and once she's made the motion, she can't second it, so that leaves two. So, I'm gonna look over here. So, okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? We close the public hearing. Action items.
Madam Mayor, so it, it appears that we've done something we were doing with the planning commission, which is when you have a public hearing, we then put the motion right with it.
I see. So, you want me to, cause I was gonna say, I, I was gonna put it down here in the action item, but you want it?
Yeah, right now.
Okay, there we go. All right, so I will take a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three, a resolution to twenty twenty-three dash zero six, a res- resolution to approve submitting the proposed Heart of Cedar Springs Park Improvement Project to the Department of Natural Resources and to commit to matching funding.
I will make a motion and as we do it as presented.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? I will take a roll call since this involves the potential, if we're lucky, to spend some money. Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Ms. Hamel.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
And Mayor Conley votes yes. So, in hopes, fingers crossed, we get a grant. Action items, motion to approve the proposal of executive recruiter for a price not to exceed. Um, I would actually like to table this motion. I have it, um.
Madam Mayor, if I could to make a recommendation.
Sure.
So, Mr. Walsh is here and we appreciate that. Um, one of the things I was going to discuss with the, the board is the possibility of having recruiters present themselves. You know, this is gonna be somewhat of an intimate experience between the board recruiter. Um, so maybe you'd like to hear from Mr. Walsh today and then we'll see if Mr. Freed might be available at some future date.
Sure.
So, hear from Mr. Walsh today and then maybe table it at that point to make.
Okay, sounds good. Yes.
I have a question. Is it what my understanding that MML does not have, cannot get us into the schedule that we need?
Uh, I think that's part of it. Um, you know, it's been my experience recently that the MML has been, I don't wanna say difficult to work with, but
Hmm.
A little bit, um, they're, they're kinda like a battleship. They have a hard time turning and, and being a little bit flexible on things.
Hmm.
So, at least it was my thought that this board wanted to move forward with this quicker, which is why we're doing it today at a, you know, a budget meeting. Um, and so I asked the MML, I think eight or ten days ago, if they could submit something. And then two days ago, you know, two days before your meeting, when I normally have this done, seven days.
Hmm.
I emailed them again and they said, we just don't have time to do it.
Okay, they're probably full.
So, I then went and I looked at their most recent recruitment that they did, uh, which I believe is Alcrapins. They're charging eighteen thousand dollars, which is almost double what these two groups are proposing.
I think we paid twenty thousand dollars to get you.
Well, it was worth every penny.
I thought it was ten, but that's okay.
Well, maybe.
We're not negotiating up with.
Not negotiating up.
All due respect to her.
But, uh, both Mr. Walsh and, uh, the pivot group, I think, are excellent groups. I think you're gonna be well represented by one of them.
So, we, I guess the plan is you present to us and then we're gonna table it until we can possibly hear from the other person or okay, however that might work.
Hey, if I may make a comment, I think time is of the essence.
Okay.
Uh, we should have this all nailed down by the time we have our next council meeting.
Hmm, okay.
Okay, so, uh, it's very important for the other group to be here
Yeah.
On that date, uh, and have it prior to, so we can take a look at it, so, okay.
Yep, so I think what I would do is after Mr. Walsh presents, if you'd like to, um, contact Pivot Group, say your only option is on the thirteenth and if not, you know, you lose that ability.
Sounds good to me.
And there'll be cake.
I've heard that.
So, what kinda motion should we make or?
Do you wanna just come talk to us? And you helped us a while ago.
Excuse me?
You helped us a while ago.
I did, um.
Dad?
Uh, yeah, there were three finalists there. Um, the other one is now the city manager doing very well in Jackson. The other one is doing very well in Wisconsin.
Try to get us one to last longer.
Yeah.
Knock on mic, but I'm just saying, neither one of them lasted very long.
Uh, yeah, well, yeah, yeah, the, the average in the States actually shorter than, uh, much shorter than the service that Mr. Womack does.
Hmm.
So, I'm not really, uh, wasn't prepared tonight and there's a real disadvantage to go tonight and then have the other firm go in front of you next time, so I'm at a disadvantage, but, um, so.
Would you just like to come back?
No, it's, it's fine. I'll, uh, do the best I can. So, our firm has been around since, uh, ninety, uh, seven, so we've been around for twenty-six, twenty-seven years. Um, we've done, um, over a hundred, uh, searches in Michigan. Um, our fee is our fee. I got that. I'm sorry, I got that point. Um, we, um, uh, we serve, um, we've served anywhere from, um, over on the east side of the state all the way to Marquette. Uh, we average approximately, uh, twelve to eighteen recruitments a year. Um, and we start, uh, with a community profile. We highlight the community. Um, I think my knowledge of Cedar Springs will help in that process. My long history of Cedar Springs. One of the things that we do that no other firm does that I think is really important is that is the candidate questionnaire. And what we do is that we put out a, to the top candidates, we'll put out a questionnaire. And you'll see that when you've got the candidates. That's something we started about nine years ago. And it talks about the projects they've been, and everyone thinks that it's a, it's about the projects and all that that we've done, but it's really about question number five. Question number five on the survey, or on this, uh, questionnaire asks them, is there anything in your background that you wanna share with us now that if it were to come out later, would be an embarrassment to the city of Cedar Springs? It's a really important question.
Hmm.
It's important to know that because what you'll find is things don't come out. And you'll find out about them after the fact and it can be really embarrassing. What you have is now a questionnaire from them where they had an opportunity to say something to you. They didn't disclose it. And so, you're covered. That's an important component that we do. We don't send it to any, everyone. We send it to the top candidates. So, we would do the, uh, candidate, uh, we would do the candidate profile. We would get that out on, uh, the MML website. We would also do lots of social media. Um, I have somebody who's totally committed to social, social media part of that. So, we would do handshake, Glassdoor, LinkedIn, uh, Facebook and many others. Um, then we also target, um, so being that this is, we've done a lot of work in Cat County. We worked in Ada Township. We've worked in, um, um, Hudsonville and we've done Grand Haven and Coopersville and a bunch of places in Ottawa County as well. So, knowing the area like I, I do and having lived here, got married here, um, we would really focus in a three-county group. Cause one of the things you're seeing is that there's not a lot of movement from candidates across the state. Why? Because I'm locked in at a two point six percent mortgage on my house. Even if I get a twenty or twenty-five thousand dollar raise, I'm going to a seven percent mortgage. I just ate up my raise with my mortgage increase. So, recruitment's really changed over the last even six to eighteen months with the economy the way it is. So, we would really target in on, because we know a lot of the people in Cat and Ottawa County from our experience. We would really focus in MacCom County. Uh, we would really focus in on those counties and send personal emails. We just don't, you can't just put out the ad and say, okay, come and apply. I mean, Cedar Springs has a great reputation, but no community has that greater reputation.
Yeah.
You have to be really aggressive and we are a very aggressive firm. Um, and so we would go out, we recruit candidates, and here's the other thing too. Every Friday, you would get an email from me, whoever you wish for me to send that to on your staff. And that staff person would then share it with you every Friday. So, you'll know every week about what's going on, how many candidates we have, how's it working? What do we need to do? And so you'll have that right up until the end. So, we do a profile, we do targeted recruiting, then we send updates to you. We send the questionnaire out. And then when we close the deadline, at the end of the four weeks, we meet with you in closed session, go over the candidates, that sort of thing. Uh, we set up, we do all the interview, we do the interview questions for you. We do A to Z. Your staff should not have to do anything except for provide the Friday updates that I send to you. And then if you have any questions for me, you can email me, you can call me at any time, uh, throughout the entire process. Um, we can do, um, I agree with, um, with Council Member Gross, time is of the essence, especially with the school season coming up. If people are gonna relocate, you wanna hit that season, you don't wanna miss that. So, after you make a selection on April thirteenth, we would be very aggressive and start right away. We wouldn't wanna have the jo- uh, the job posted within ten days. So, we do a quick, uh, profile. I probably already had the profile. What I'll probably do is have the profile finished just in case you hire us because then we can go out and get started right away. And so, we're out looking for someone by mid-April. It's a four-week recruitment period. And then following that, um, is following the recruitment, uh, the, uh, uh, putting the profile together, recruitment period. We can have something to you depending on how quickly you wanna go. I will, I don't like to rush it because it's such an important decision. But eight to ten weeks, you should have a candidate, uh, uh, cause I'm gonna have the profile finished. So, we're not gonna have this waiting period of a week or two. So, we go with the profile right away. So, within April thirteenth, within five weeks of that, you should, we should have a candidate list. So, we should be able to finish this thing up, to your point, Mr. Gross. We should be able to finish this thing up in, um, about eight weeks, eight to nine weeks. So, that's our process from A to Z. We cover it all. We've been doing it for twenty-seven years. Um, we are considered, um, he, the premier recruiting company in Michigan. Um, we do a lot more recruitments than anyone else. We do more recruitments than all the firms combined in Michigan.
You were very thorough when we used you previously. I mean, I think you and I were the people on the board and Molly.
Or?
When, when we interviewed for sad?
No, I wasn't.
Okay.
Missed that.
Yeah.
And we also get a lot of.
I guess maybe it's just me.
I wasn't on council at the time.
Yeah.
We get a lot of, uh, recruit, we get a lot of, uh, referrals and we get a lot of, uh, folks who hire us multiple times. So, we hope not to come back, uh, very often, but, uh, sometimes things don't work out. Uh, but anyway, that's what we.
Yeah, cause that's your problem with Michael. He's not working out.
Took seven years to figure it out.
But, um, that's really what we do from A to Z. Um, and we're really proud of what we do and we're with you till the end. You know, there, I, I don't wanna make this too rosy, cause it's not rosy. There are not a lot of good people.
Yeah.
There are not a lot of good people looking, okay? So, whoever you hire, they have to be extremely aggressive and they have to be really tied into the network. I'm very active in the state association. There are four committees in the state. I chair one of the state committees in the state. So, I know I have a network after being in the business for thirty-some years. Um, you gotta be really aggressive and, uh, you, the also thing is you can't, you gotta know your target. We can't target managers who have been around for seven or ten years and they're making a hundred thirty thousand dollars. It's not our target. It's a waste of time for me to focus on those candidates. I know where the focus needs to be for this size of community and this.
Would you pay a little better than we used to?
Work a lot harder than they used to too.
Yes, ridiculous amount of hours, not gonna.
Would you highlight some of the programs that Mr. Womack has been working on in, in our forthcoming as far as projects? Uh, so they would have some idea of what they're walking into?
Yes, absolutely, Mr. Gross. There's a page in our profile that we put together that I would be getting information from Mr. Womack and it's called Opportunities and Challenges. And on that page will cover, um, seven, eight, nine projects that you have going on. Pocket Park, the Sidewalk Project. I think that's a CDBG project, the sidewalks. Yeah, so I would, um, I've already done a lot of research before I came here tonight. So, what I would do is I would put these opportunities and challenges into one page. And then we'd also talk about the right fit, the type of person that you're looking for. But we also have to spend a lot of time in that profile, selling the community. The profile is less about the job because if I have to tell somebody what a city manager is or does, we're in trouble. So, so. we're in trouble. So, so I have to really focus in on the community. I want to talk about the new bridge, I want to talk about the library, I want to talk about the sidewalk project that's going on, I want to talk about the new fire station. All those things are how I help sell. You're in Kent County. You know, you're close to Grand Rapids. There's a lot of things to help sell Cedar Springs, and it's a very stable community. You don't have a history, which is really important. You don't have a history of a lot of turnover of every, every eighteen months. You don't have a revolving door of managers. Those are all the things I put together, budget, number of employees, all that stuff. But really got to sell the community first before we do anything else.
We don't have people.
The question was primarily to make sure that they weren't overwhelmed, that all of a sudden they, they hit the door and come in here, and we start throwing these things at them. Because Mike has put a lot of time into them. They're going to have to be able to pick up where he left off and run, run with it, so. Uh, that was the reason for the question.
Yeah. If I could jump in for half a second, sorry. So it's actually something I started working on today. I've got eight pages worth of contacts, and here's the project you're working on, here's who you talked to about this project. Guys will be left in good shape. That's really helpful. So that's us.
What happens, um, if we like go to the candidates and there isn't one, then what?
Then you get to see, that hasn't happened in a long time, um, but if it does, I stay with you until you're a hundred percent satisfied. If it takes an extra month, it takes an extra, oh, and I also forgot, we also provide a, um, one-year guarantee. For any reason, if the person leaves within a year, we're back here for free. Okay? And, and if it's, you know what, if it's fifteen months or, you know, this is, this is where I started. This community gave me, I interviewed right over here in nineteen ninety-one, April sixth.
So while we have a new library and a new fire station, we do not have a new city hall. Just to be clear, we did get some paint, so.
Looks a lot better than when I was here, I'll tell you that. You're spending all our money on fireworks.
And you developed our first DDA. I remember that.
Yes. Yeah, around nineteen eighty-two.
And then it's been reconfigured.
I fixed it for them.
Yeah.
I'll tell you what, though.
Didn't have any money, so.
Progress I've seen here in the last five to six years is really phenomenal. I've been up here because my wife Shar, um, her parents live just north of town. And so we come up here, but, um, to see the progress you've made, uh, this isn't the same Cedar Springs that I was here.
That's correct.
Yep. So, anyway.
Any questions?
Have anything else for you? I didn't have much prepared, but that's what we do.
That one-year guarantee is very significant.
What's that?
I said that's all we needed, I think.
Okay. So Ms. Conley, something I'd, I'd like to do is, uh, for the next meeting, I'll send Mr. Walsh an invite, uh, to the Zoom meeting at the very least. He is Lansing-based. So if you'd like to join us again at that meeting, we'd be happy to hear from him.
Yes. And all of our meetings are always on Zoom, and all of our meetings are recorded for YouTube.
Well, I can't tell you, if I can stress enough how important this search is to us, I cannot tell you, because our reputation in the state, which we work really hard to maintain, I cannot tell you the last time I went to a council meeting or a township board meeting or county board meeting when we were on the agenda. We just don't do that. But tonight was really important for me. It's important for us, so that's why we came here tonight. And I hope you'll keep that in mind on the thirteenth. But we will, um, try to Zoom in that evening. And, um, we're not flashy, uh, we're just, uh, we just work really hard and try to bring you good candidates. Thank you for your attention. I really appreciate it. We're going to head down to the brewery.
Yes. I highly recommend the Brussels sprouts.
They're good, too.
That might be the best.
They're, they're amazing.
Now I'm just jealous of her.
They have, and I don't know if you do veggie burgers, but they have a particularly good veg. They have a really good, it's called the Market Burger. I highly recommend.
Appreciate it. And gentlemen, it's really good to see you again. It brings back a lot of good memories. Thank you very much for your time.
So we'll move on, um.
So, Madam Mayor, do you want to formally table?
I think we want to formally table that. I'll take a motion to table.
Motion to table.
I'll support that.
A discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion is tabled. Thank you. Nice to see you again. You, too. Uh, onto item B, motion to approve the March twenty-twenty-three estimate total for the Main Street resurfacing project at eight hundred and six thousand dollars. Eight, eight hundred, six thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Oh, I feel really bad about this, and I do apologize. It wasn't me. I'm not the one raising this price. You know, this is a, a combination of just all the costs for rooms went up.
I think you've talked about, I mean, we, haven't we had multiple conversations about how this went up?
Well, that's, that's part of it, but we're also suffering unfortunately from a couple, um, of engineering mistakes, in my opinion. You know, we, we had a previous engineer who I think estimated the entire project low. Uh, so we, we went to, um, the tip amendments to get, like, you know, our, our matching share was lower than it probably should have been. And we got hit by COVID, and that raised all the rates, and now this is a, I believe, a mobilization error, which is probably forty to fifty thousand dollars of the hundred thousand dollar increase. So, uh, from what I understand, uh, to move forward at this point, we do have to approve of the commitment towards the eight oh six. And then we'll go get bids. Now Fishback thankfully, uh, is traditionally estimating very high. So it's a possibility it comes in luck. Um, and then if the, uh, actual cost I think is ten percent over the eight oh six estimate, uh, then we can, uh, back out of the project at that point. That's my understanding, so. It's just one of those things. We, we have to spend the money to get this done.
This is for the entirety of the road then?
That's my understanding.
Okay, because there was some talk about it wasn't going to be able to cover, and.
No, so we, we talked about that as a possibility of eliminating the portion north of Pine Street of the eighteen-mile road. But that's actually the cheaper portion of the road, because it doesn't involve all the sidewalk work, all the other things. Um, but you know what? We're, we're doing this for the next ten, fifteen years.
Well, my concern is I want to get it all done.
All of it.
And that's.
I'm sure that Mr. Hall would come in here and say, well, you know, you could do it now for eight hundred thousand bucks, or you can do it next year for a million.
Nope, that's exactly what he'll say. Not that I had that conversation.
So I, I, I really am sorry that this keeps going up in cost, but this is what I've been asked to bring you guys today.
Depends on who's bidding. It may come down. If it's more local, somebody doing the prep and stuff, it might come down a little bit, like in high school.
It costs, what it, I mean, this is not like something that's extravagant. I mean, this is something we got to do.
We do.
It just needs to be done.
I just wish I had my little magic wand to make things cheaper, but it doesn't seem to work out that way.
It's what it is. And hey, we can afford it. I mean, it's, I'm not saying it's not taking a bite out of our budget, as we're about here, but it's why we exist, is to make these kind of things happen and make sure the streets get fixed and the.
And it's just awful. The street, downtown street is just awful, so.
Needs to happen.
So one thing I can relate is that, uh, I did hear from the company working on the sidewalk. So as part of this project, we're going to make all the sidewalks in downtown ADA compliant. I heard from them today that they finally got the very last property owner signed on to that. All of downtown Main Street is going to be ADA compliant as part of this project.
Which is huge, right?
Yes.
I mean, that's one of our big focuses as a council, is going to try to make our community accessible, more accessible for people with disabilities. As we talked about at the special meeting on the apartment complex, that if we're lucky to live long enough, we're all going to end up disabled. So the better that, I mean, for real, am I wrong? Marty's laughing at me.
Maybe.
Old, old age is not for citizens.
No, it's not.
And so we need accessible housing, we need accessible sidewalks, we need accessible parks, we need, it, it needs to be accessible, so that's the thing.
Well, you, you guys know I'm going to have to come back and visit you after this project's done, because one of my baby projects I've been trying to get through for years now are those curb bump outs. Part of this project, so I'll come up to visit your curb bump outs.
Oh, God.
Are you going to bring them flowers?
Might, yeah.
A bench with some flowers? Okay, so any other discussion on it? We have a motion in a second, correct? Oh, motion to.
I would like to make a motion that, uh, or item, was it, um, item B, as presented.
We have a second, second. Hey, I'll do a rule, any other discussion?
Madam Mayor, we do have Ms. Atchison.
Oh, welcome. Would you like to come in? We are voting on, on the, the Main Street resurfacing project. And I will give you a minute to get yourself situated. If you like, it's item B.
Motion is to approve it as presented.
As presented at this amount of money. Okay. Okay? So I'm going to do a roll call. I'll start with Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Ms., uh, Hamel?
Yes.
I will skip over you, Ms. Atchison, and give you a hot second to sit down, Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Uh, I normally vote last, but Mayor Conley's going to vote yes, and Ms. Atchison, do you want to vote?
Yes.
Okay. And please make.
Yes, I want to vote, and yes, I vote, yeah.
And for the record, please note that, uh, Ms. Atchison is here at, we're going to call it like six forty-five. Okay, moving on. So you, we have a vote for that, budget workshop. This is the exciting part of the meeting.
Real.
So item A, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, draft city budget discussion with the proposed water and sewer rates for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, and, uh, increase five percent, sewer increase two percent. And I know we've been trying to figure out how to how to slice that particular
Before, um,
Onion.
Before Ms. Falcon gets started, so I believe last should be flipped it the other way around, sewer five percent, water, uh, two percent. Uh, the ordinance says that, uh, it shall go up by the greater of, um, I think, two percent or of the inflationary index for the Midwest, you know, CPI. I don't remember what the Midwest CPI this year was, but it's like eight percent. That's punishing.
Yes.
So the sewer funds in okay shape. Uh, the water fund has a lot more expenses coming out, so that's why. Falcon, take it away, please.
With pictures even.
Thank you. Good evening. Kind of flip through the front of the book, the camp, yeah. This is on your screen as well. I'll put it up here so the people on computer can see it as well. Couple charts in the front here. Proposed mileage rates. Annual taxes. So general fund, so as of six thirty twenty-two, our last completed fiscal year, we put a hundred and ninety-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars into fund balance, which brings our total, like Mr. Womack had mentioned earlier, general fund unrestricted fund balance, one point four million. That's cumulative.
That's about fifty, fifty-three, fifty-four. And the state recommends eighteen?
Policy's twenty.
Twenty, but the state recommends, our policy is more than what the state requires, right? No?
I suspect, so i- it's usually done by the size of your budget.
Okay.
These will be lower amount.
Sure.
But the only one that really matters is council's policy.
And then there was an, the piece two about unsecured or secured, um, retirement funds, and I think we have that funded. That was a thing for a while.
MERS pension?
Yeah.
Eighty percent funded.
Okay, because that's a piece that can sometimes.
And we don't offer post-employment health benefits, which is sometimes a big liability for many municipalities, but not for us.
Sure. And I'm, I'm kind of sad that we don't, but I understand.
So we start with the general fund, um, a couple new pictures this year, our White Pine Trails development. They are building house after house up there. And then our West Street development looks really nice with that new paved road and plenty of property for sale. The general fund covers many different departments. On the revenue side, the two largest sources of revenue are taxes and state shared revenue, at seventy-six percent of the budget. On the expense side, um, police and fire are the largest percent of the expense side at forty-three percent. The total general fund revenue, two million, six hundred sixty-one thousand. Proposed for twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. That's, um, a little bit less than current year, forty, just over forty thousand less. Um, again, at this point, it's proposed, it can change living document.
Yeah, how many budget amendments did we make this last year?
Um, April will be the second one of the fiscal year.
Say two or three.
And then we can do it again in June if need be.
Sure. And that's fine. Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, that's how it rolls.
Right, yep. To the good and bad.
Right.
So both ways. Sure. Heading through the funds here, I'm can't see the, the heading up here, but city council is the first one. Um, same budget as current year. No changes there. On the city manager side, um, pretty similar budget as current year as well.
There is fifty-five thousand put into there for a possible assistant.
Next, we have general, general administration. That's where, um, a lot of my charges hit, and the deputy finance director. Small increase there. Mainly due to, um, we would like to bring the deputy clerk slash deputy finance director on full time since the deputy finance director that I hired last year, um, decided to move on. So bringing, so, um, you know, one person full-time with benefits, there's going to be an increase.
Of course.
And April's done an amazing job, so we'll be happy to have her.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Next, we have the city clerk, deputy clerk. Um, we have some increases here as well with the, in the clerk department and the election department with the changes that we've seen in the elections lately. It's really a guessing game at this point, but we feel strongly we need to budget for kind of worst-case scenario, because
Yes.
if we have to have eight days of voting before every election, more equipment, more of everything, more ballots, more supplies.
And we're right at that tipping point of needing a new precinct, right?
Heading there fast.
So, and with the new construction, do we have any idea about how many more people? I mean, I understand we see how many more, we talk about property value, but like, do we have any idea how many more citizens? River protection?
Well, we've got a, probably another, what, seventy to eighty homes to be built in the, um, the single-family residential neighborhood. You're probably looking at two and a half, three people per house. And then if the apartment complex get built, gets built out, you're probably looking at similar two to two and a half people times one sixty. So I would guess we're going to be above four thousand within the next three to five years. But I, I think what we're talking about really is the eight days of early voting and all the other stuff that the state legislature has imposed against local government. So while.
Darn having people vote. Gosh.
I don't think anybody in this room is going to say that voting is a bad thing. We obviously all like voting, but the state, um, has a habit of telling us what to do and not providing funding for it.
The teacher has all the feels. Just saying.
I have a question about the charts. Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Probably a super dumb question.
It's not dumb.
So year-to-date for as of twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, that you just clarify what those top ones mean, so I can understand that.
Where, where are you at, so that I can know, too?
Like the top, the top line where it says GL number, description?
Uh, which, which chart are we on?
It doesn't matter which one.
Oh, okay.
Anyone, I just want to know what the what that means. Like, is it this year-to-date as of two thousand twenty-two, or is it?
Yeah, twelve thirty-one twenty-two, so that's six months into our current fiscal year. That's the expenses through twelve twenty-one.
What is the fiscal year?
July one, twenty-two to six thirty twenty-three.
The state, the state, the state did that.
Okay, so it's July to June.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah.
That was my problem. I was like, what is happening?
Yeah, the state, the state said that, they actually changed it, like, there was a thing when they tried to, when they had the schools go for eighteen months on a, to try to make it, yeah, that was under Engler. I don't know what that says, that I know this, but-
On the board.
Hamel, various governments do it on different dates.
Yeah.
Most cities do July first, I think, do April first.
April first, villages are March first.
The state does October first.
Okay, so this was, the year-to-date is the July twenty twenty-two to twelve twenty-two.
Year-to-date's a good way to measure how we're doing with spending money, cuz it should equal to about half.
It's half of what it should be, okay.
Now, there are some things that only happen in the summer, so you'll see zero, 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 and then all of a sudden it's all gone.
Okay.
Especially when there's a specific project that we've, you know.
And then I had another question about the millages. Are you gonna go over that, or do you want me to ask it right now, at the end?
Um, that, the sheet I already went by?
Yeah, it was just the chart, just the, um, public school sinking fund. I was just wondering why we didn't have that last year.
That wasn't renewed? That went to a vote of the people and it didn't get renewed?
And, okay, so we're hoping to put it on the ballot again then?
That's up to the school.
That's to the school.
Based on the school.
Okay, we don't, we just run, we have to do whatever they ask us regarding that. We don't, like-
Same way that the library board can raise your taxes, the school can raise. We just have to do-
They just-
Whatever they say.
Okay, but, so they did this year then, correct?
They did not.
Oh, cuz on the proposed, it says-
The projects they're working on up there now are off from the last one yet. Any new, uh, renewal or more funds was denied.
The, the voters turned down the sinking fund, so they're putting it back on the ballot.
Okay, so that is really actually just proposed, it's like in theory.
Right, they're asking to put it on the ballot, and then the people will decide if we vote for it or not.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you, sorry.
And that'll be dis- school district-wide, like, we're just running.
Yeah.
It'll go to every place where there's, if you, if you have property in the school district.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure what we controlled versus what is just told to us that we're gonna do.
And we, we have to vote to approve the ballot when it comes to us.
Oh, okay.
But we don't, I mean, we can't like say, well, we're not gonna let you, I mean, it's not-
It's ceremonial.
It's not, we're just kind of a, because our clerk handles the ballot in the election, where that, like, does it look right? Is everything spelled correctly? Is it, like, that's supposed to be kind of our job?
It does not go to the-
Kent County?
County, whoever approves the language for the ballots.
Yes.
So it's the county would approve any language.
Right. Right. Right, we proof it. That makes sense?
Yep.
Ballot's gonna be confusing anyway, as long as the county knows it.
Yeah, yeah.
They're happy.
I know. We do have a, we have a very good county clerk, God, who has caught lots of things sometimes that are not what they should be. So, so yeah. Questions? Good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Um, next we have our accounting audit department. This is a state requirement. We have to have an annual audit. We gotta pay for it.
And we've had the same auditing firm for a long time.
I turn here.
Longer, yeah.
They do a good job, and we're in a contract with them.
They're fabulous, yeah.
IT department is a little bit less this year. Um, current year, we've got ten thousand budget under capital expense. Um, IT right, our company that we contract with, will be here this coming Monday, actually, to update our switch upfront and some wireless access points. Um, we will be getting a new server before June thirty as well, so they're building that for us. So that ten thousand shows here, zero, you know, year-to-date zero, but before June thirty, that will be probably close to the ten thousand. Um, so we won't need a new server next year, just the only capital expense, um, some new computers for UL right up there, and, um, a couple desktop upgrades for staff.
Do we lease some of our, uh, equipment?
Lease? No.
Okay.
Is that even a thing anymore?
Yeah, we do talk about it, um, but copier-
Oh, yeah, copier, we lease.
Okay.
Postage machine.
I would say, but for the most part, I feel like that's just not even a-
Not our computers.
Yeah, and what do we, what do we do with these after?
Recycle them, give them back to IT right to recycle.
Well, we didn't get these ones from IT right.
We didn't, correct, yep.
I'm sure we'll talk with IT right, cuz a part of it is we gotta make sure that there's nothing on the hard drive that could be, you know-
Problematic.
Else can read or have access to.
Can't like give them to the library or something?
Well, that's what I'm saying, when we get to that point, we could talk about it, but we'd have to make sure that the hard drives were wiped.
I mean, that's just the stuff I, I'm just thinking may work fine for-
We certainly are not wasteful.
Document.
We certainly don't try to be wasteful, but we do have requirements we have to meet too.
And like, I know GRCCs like sells their stuff.
Sure, yeah.
Dramatically reduced. You know, I just, we just bought a-
Could like loan it out as well.
Twenty-five dollars.
We're gonna replace everybody's computer next year except for you.
I'm totally fine with that. I don't wanna, that's what, when you said that, I was like, these are fine, we literally don't do anything, unless there's more stuff going on with it, but I'm like, this is fine.
The clerk has the-
So they are no longer supported and updated.
Okay.
Right. And then somebody could hack into them. And then that might be bad, I'm guessing. Does that answer your question?
Um, no, I'm just gonna think about it and see if I can- Better to do with us than just give it back to the company we bought it from.
You could probably buy it for-
The council does have policies about how you, um, get rid of old, um, defunct equipment. We do all these, we bought these from Walmart. They're still good shape, and we can get them wiped, I see no reason to put it-
We used to not use computers.
I would wanna donate them or like sell them for like five dollars, like, that'd be so nice.
Give your friends, and then we'll do that next year.
Okay, sorry, that was so off-topic, Carla, I'm so sorry.
I was gonna say, we can have a conversation if that's the thing in the future.
Shut me up whenever you want.
Okay.
Next, we have board review, um, proposing a little increase in their pay. They currently get, um, twelve dollars an hour, proposing to up that to thirteen dollars an hour, minimum two, two-hour time. They do, by law, have to sit here for quite a few hours just to be available when March board review, July board review, December board review, um-
And it's not an easy job either.
Yeah.
This, this is the person we were still looking for a person for, for the day.
Sure we are.
Yes.
We're always looking for people.
Oh. Okay, we'll talk about it later.
Yes, I have a person.
Bye, please. Um, next we have city assessor. This is our contract with, um, Grand Rapids Township for assessing services. Um, seven hundred dollars here for capital expense. The county's gonna do another flyover. This is our little teeny piece of the county flyover.
Right.
Gives us access to the new flyover information on our computer, so very important information, very helpful, yes. So that'll be in the new fiscal year.
Very revealing at times.
Yeah.
I have a question.
See a lot of information on those.
I don't know what it means.
Huh?
I don't know what it means.
When you go to, uh, parcel viewer, they're gonna-
County parcel viewer?
They're playing over.
Oh, okay.
Of like, all the roads and all the, like, everything in the county.
Then we'll get our piece of the city.
Everything in your backyard.
My backyard is cute.
His code enforcer looks at your backyard every day.
Yeah.
Do they look to see how many piles of dog poo there are? I was out cleaning today. Is that a thing?
I don't think the resolution's that good.
Not quite that good.
We're glad we're recording this.
So here's the second, um, department I was talking about. This is the elections department from eleven thousand, four fifty to seventy-eight thousand, two sixty. Again, if, if we, we have to have the people here, we have to have the budget to pay the people, buy the equipment, buy the supplies.
Yes.
Don't really have a choice.
Yes.
Geez, that's a big jump, holy moly.
Yeah, do you remember when I was complaining about email being like nine hundred dollars? That was the first thing I had to, I just put it on, and I was like, no.
And I would greatly prefer to have Gmail instead of what we have, but that's like way more expensive, so here we are.
Next, we have city buildings and grounds. Um, a little smaller budget that we're proposing for twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, towards the bottom, the paving and resurfacing expense, we currently have twenty-five thousand budgeted there, and we're gonna budget twenty-five thousand in the new fiscal year. We're gonna hold this year's twenty-five thousand and combine fifty thousand, hopefully do something with our parking lot out back. Um, it's, it's in desperate need of help, so, um, that's our plan for that. Um, then the ten thousand for capital expense, um, that's gonna be some more repairs to the building here. Um, the water damage on this side and the water damage on the other, water leaking. We're gonna fix the walls and-
Bad?
Plan is to fix that.
Can we get a new roof?
Um, that's part of this year.
Okay.
Seventy-five thousand budget for this fiscal year.
Okay.
Um, Mr. LaRose is working on getting people here to see if, what our options are for a roof.
Okay.
Fixing it, do we need a new one?
And it's got a complication.
Cuz, cuz it's a flat roof.
Yeah, well, and doesn't it come like, isn't there like a weird?
Ton of angles.
Yeah, it's not even just that it's just flat. It's got like a, a thing over here where, I don't know, Jerry told me. Cause you know, Jerry knows a guy.
That's the plan, to get somebody here before June thirty and get that fixed.
Yeah, it's the reason that it's, it would be hard to add on to or even like reconfigure.
Next is our city attorney. Um, unfortunately, we need to pay to have their services, so.
Question on it.
Hmm.
Okay. Twenty-one, twenty-two was twenty-eight, five, twenty-five?
Yep.
Correct?
Hmm.
Okay, so we're only doing twenty-five, uh, requested. We all know that Mike did a lot of work, and we still paid twenty-five plus. Is twenty-five gonna be enough once Mike leaves?
Uh, I mean, this is one of those things where, you know, part of the legal training I use in this job does save some money, absolutely.
I'm certain of it.
But there's also a lot of things that are more complex that we've been getting into as of my legal training.
Right.
Which I can't necessarily do. So, you know, I'm not saying that the next manager won't get into, um, some difficult legal situations, but some of the stuff that we're doing is costing money, and I'm, I'm not sure if another manager would have gotten into it the way I would. But I'm trying to solve some problems that have been kind of dormant for a long-
But I guess what I'm saying is, is we're budgeting less than what we spent this year, and you were doing work on it.
Yeah, I, I'm comfortable with this amount. Um, if we were gonna increase it, I wouldn't go more than thirty. I think, I think that's a fair amount.
And we can-
That would be something for the entire board to think about, but, uh, and I guess if you're comfortable with it, I can be comfortable with it, with the idea that if we have to, we can put more into it, but, uh, I, because that did stick out to me when I looked at it. And, uh, if we're spending that much now, and we have things coming up here in the future, that we know we will have coming up, or potentially with, with other projects and so forth, that, uh, I was just wondering if that was sufficient.
Oh, so we also budget for legal services and other parts of the budget.
Right.
Code enforcer has her own separate line for legal services, um, the sewer fund has its own source for legal services. So this is general, uh, legal work. And, uh, yeah, again, everything, every budget is a crapshoot sometimes, cuz you never know what's gonna happen. Um, but I think on a year-to-year basis, twenty-five, maybe thirty at the most would be fine.
Fine.
Other questions? And we can, we can amend it if we have to, right? I mean, if we have a thing that comes up, then we need to spend more money on the attorney, we do that, right?
And, and the thing is, I, I mean, if we're setting a budget, I'd rather have too much than too little.
I agree.
And not being totally extravagant, so, uh, I don't know about the rest of you, I hate the last minute, I gotta change it because I didn't plan well enough in advance, so, but if, if you're satisfied with this, I'm satisfied. Another eight thousand dollars.
Well, and something else I'd say is that, uh, Mr. Slugger, I think, has been extremely fair to us.
Yes.
Well, I'm not arguing that, so.
I think he does a lot of, he's called pro bono work, but I don't think he bills us for everything he does for us, um, because we've treated him so nicely, and because we kind of speak the same language.
Okay.
But I think you're good hands with him.
Okay.
He's been our attorney a long time.
Next, we have, um, unallocated employee benefits. This is, um, part of the uniform charge for DPW and workers' comp for DPW. Pretty same, pretty similar budget. Police department, this is our contract with Kent County for police services. Um, I emailed back with my contact at the county, and this is the number that we came up with, so I think the current year's six hundred and sixty thousand budget is, is not quite accurate. If we spent six hundred and ninety-nine thousand the year before, so seven fifteen looks reasonable.
Oh, we only spent two hundred and twenty-three and-
Two hundred and forty-seven thousand? Two hundred and twenty-three thousand? Um, sometimes it takes them a while to get us the bill from the previous month. Um, it's, it's a good fifty thousand a month, so.
Is there like a particular month that's more, like, do we spend more in October because of red flannel, or do we spend more in the summer because of?
Red flannel, we get a bill separately for the extra police services there.
I just didn't know if there might be a big hop somewhere during the year
Yeah, that's us.
that we just haven't got yet.
There, there is a couple months out of the year where there's three paydays instead of two.
Okay.
There is two months out of the year. I don't know if we've already hit one of them in here or not, this as of twelve thirty-one, that's what hit our general ledger.
Okay, thanks.
Next, we have the fire department. Um, some changes here this year. Marty's proposing, um, a full-time employee with benefits. So you can see up at the top there, new employee. Um, and we've also increased what we're putting aside for, um, vehicle replacements with, um, twenty twenty-six, we'll be buying a new fire truck, hopefully, right Marty? And the cost that these new trucks are coming in at, uh, what we were putting away a year probably won't be enough.
Sure.
So we upped it by twenty thousand for the next couple of years. Um, we'll see where we're at when we get there. I mean, that's, that's the best we can do.
That's county pumper, right? Yes, okay, so what they're reflecting for is trucks are far more than what you're gonna be looking at from us spending for that particular truck also, so.
Sure.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, ma'am, I'm, uh, not quite sure how I ended up on a committee, um, or commission, which we deal with as our county pumpers. Um, I sit in.
I can't imagine how you ended up on a committee about fire trucks.
I think they voted on that while I was in the bathroom. However, um, I sat in on a Zoom meeting Tuesday with Solon. Pretty basic truck, meets the needs. Anywhere from seven fifty to eight hundred thousand.
Sure.
Um, I wasn't on board when Mr. Gross bought our county pumper, but I'm thinking four, right around.
Closer to five.
Closer to five, so, and there's a two-year. I guess you wanna say wait for him. I, Solon is, is due next year, but they're specing it now.
Sure.
Um, Calgonia's next, and then we're next.
I was gonna say, it's like an eight, eighteen year? What's the ro-
The rotation has been, well, it will be seventeen years.
Yeah.
But, um-
I remember, I don't know what it says, I remember when we got the last one.
Um, one of the employees, one of the helpers down the Kent County Commission, um, said that, uh, we would be talking next year.
Oh.
Oh, we will be specing our, hopefully specing our truck next year. And I'm real, real nervous about this, it, uh, I, I set monies aside for several years and to find out it's
Not enough.
Not gonna be enough, but we'll, we'll, uh, we'll plug away at it and work at it and see what we can do.
At least now it will fit in the fire station.
Yes.
You don't- You don't have to have only the skinniest people go in sideways to get the truck.
There was a couple of times, Mr. Gross and I had a little, it's you push and I'll pull.
Alton, where are we gonna be at with the money that we're allocating to that capital? Yeah, we're doing fifty this year and.
But we have a lot reserved.
We've been putting some in.
Tony's pitching in two-hundred and.
Two-hundred-and-twelve.
Two-hundred-and-twelve thousand.
You know what we have reserved?
It'll be a push.
What kind of truck is this again?
A big one, it's gonna be red.
Red and black one, do double cap down there.
But no, what's it called, though?
It's fire engine.
But your intention is that what, three thousand gallons?
The county?
Well.
The county, um, we all put into a fund. And then they do a rotation, I think it's seventeen years.
Seventeen or eighteen years, yes.
So every municipality that has a fire department puts into this fund. And then everybody gets a truck that the county helps pay for on that rotation. And then you pay for the rest of it. It's a way of like, kind of spreading out the, cause fire trucks are so expensive, so.
Just for the record, they do at times come up with a surplus and they'll buy two trucks in a given year. So it made bones that I had two on you. That it can catch departments totally off. Uh, I think the one I bought, we had been moved up a year. And then, uh, so we started, we started, uh, right, so, uh, it's a challenge sometimes.
Do we sell the one we have?
Do we sell the one we have, she wants to?
We will, we will buy that one, um, we can probably get that one. We bought, if, if council remembers, last year we bought a county used engine from Spencer Fire Department because they didn't want it. We have first choice, um, we got a pretty good deal for thirty thousand dollars. And that's, I budgeted thirty to fifty thousand to purchase this one. Um, we know everything there is to know about it, we've maintained it, we've fixed it, we've kept it up to date, um, it. I, I, I guess I don't understand why the department would not want to purchase that. Our, historically, we have, um, the last two or three engines we have bought. Um, however, one of our engines is a ninety-six, that will be going down the road. You figure that's, that'll be old, close to thirty years old.
If I may, Chief. Anything over sixteen years old is not considered to be a adequate truck any longer. So, by the time they buy and it comes back around for the next one.
You should be getting one.
Well, the other trucks that we have are gonna be older than the one that we have currently. And that puts it right on the drop-off line.
Right.
As to whether it can be considered a frontline pumper or not. Uh, it will be more than likely in very good condition. Because I know they take care of it as we did while I was in there. And it will operate just fine. Uh, one of your ISO ratings and so forth comes in, they take a look at the age of your, your fleet. It used to be that, uh, ever so often, in between, the city would buy a truck solely by itself. Then you got away from this sixteen, buying a truck that's sixteen years old or close to. And you had two of them that fit in that sixteen-year window. So what you normally do is you sell the, the county truck and you have another truck in yours. In this case, the county truck will be our, our next newest truck.
Did I get your question answered?
Yes, it's pretty complicated, isn't it? Timing and.
It's not as simple as what some people think and Marty learned that when he sat in the seat of the chief.
Well, and they keep the technology keeps moving.
It's, it's always changing.
Technology is pretty close to the same, you put the water in, you pump the water out. How you do it changes this stuff.
A couple of more things real quick here. Um, my thought is to look at, and it's gonna be confusing, um, an engine anchor. It's an engine that pumps water, but it also carries, our engines carry a thousand gallons of water. I'm looking at three thousand gallons of water because I can foresee us having a contract with Nelson Township for quite.
A long time.
Number of years. Um, it's, it, it would cost Nelson probably between five to ten million dollars to build man and equip a fire station. So I see our contract with them going on for quite a few more years. And the last I knew, once you get past the trailer park, there's not any hydrants out there.
Right.
So if we have that extra couple thousand gallons of water, plus, my thought is, it may be a little bit. You don't need all the bells and whistles and everything and, and you're getting just a basic truck. Um, I, I would like to get a four-seater, but it may be even a two-seater. Um, I, I'd like to lean towards that, uh, what they call a pumper tender, a tanker. However, Mr. Womack, uh, Mr. LaRose, uh, and I went through ISO last fall. We got noticed Monday morning that we, uh, got our rating back and we're still at a four, which is on the scale, uh, Mr. Gross will tell you is very good for a city this size.
Very good.
We maintained our four and, uh, uh, thanks a lot to the DPW, uh, with flows, uh, ratings and stuff. And our equipment, our training and everything. I'm pretty proud of that and, and kudos go out to everybody that was involved in that.
We have an unbelievably capable fire department.
For those that don't understand, ISO is your insurance services organization. And they set the rates, basically, uh, set the rates for your homeowner's insurance and stuff. So, if we had, uh.
And it's about things like access to fire hydrants, it's about response time. It's about how many people that you have that are on your department that respond, how many trucks, how many, I mean, it's the whole like trucks per capita, it's, there's a whole formula.
It, it took about eight months to compile all them numbers and stuff, so that tells you how involved that is. And like I said, I'm, I'm pretty proud. Excuse me, pretty proud of that, uh, that rating.
There was a fire study done, a city manager ago. And it was crazy how good our fire department is, or a volunteer fire department.
And that's part of the conversation, but when we were specing out the truck, talking about specing out the truck. We told Marty that he couldn't have the roll-up windows, cause they don't even make those anymore.
Oh, my God.
I believe he said a Chevy, not a Cadillac. They all come with air conditioning too, so.
Ms. Nixon isn't here, but we'd like to talk about your steam-powered, right, fire truck? So yeah, no, it's, our, your fire department, our fire department is just phenomenal. And having had to use them a couple of times, not for fire, but for trees that knock electrical lines out at three o'clock in the morning in the middle of a night storm. The response time is just amazing and I'm super grateful for that.
Our response time is even a little bit desired during the day and that's.
We need a full-time person.
Eight hundred and twenty-eight calls last year and we're real, real close to two hundred already this year.
I think I've been saying to you for a while, we need a full-time person.
I, I'm not gonna argue with the chief on it, I'm not. My personal opinion is, you should be looking at two people.
I, I wouldn't disagree.
Uh, a large number of your calls during the day are medical. And you have to have at least two people that are medical to go. And I really think we need to take a look at two people. If not, full-time fire, full-time people, and it might even possibly be able to do some DPW work. When they're not occupied doing mowing of parks and things of that nature. Our park system is growing and getting bigger. Uh, whatever it is they're doing, they need to be able to drop and run. So, but, uh, I, I would really encourage us as a board and as a fire department, uh, to take a look at the possibility of getting two people. They'd have to be able, like I said, drop and run. And they could also fill in part-time uncovering some of the things we're having trouble getting people to work the DPW for.
Well, we wanted to start with one full-time person, absorb that in the budget, because when we get to the end of this, you're gonna see some red. Um, and I think we have to acknowledge that we're really talking about a three-to-five-year kind of schedule to get caught up.
Sure.
I think we're gonna be in the red for a couple of years because of all the election spending and.
I don't doubt it.
Let's start with one, go from there.
That was not, not trying to drag this out, I, I gotta ditch ice cream.
You should, you need to call home and say, put that in the freezer?
I thought process was like, excuse me, Mr. Womack said, we'll start with one and I'm still here.
Sure.
I can be that second person or that first person. I, I wobble and I, I toddle, as my wife would say, I toddle, but, and then another.
I guess you have a short commute.
Oh, yeah. When, when they plow, when Bill plows the snow in my yard, it's kinda hard to get over that. But, uh, getting back to that, uh, another year, two, maybe three, we'll see how my health is and, uh, maybe then when we look for a second person. Let's, let's, let's see how the shoe fits before we, we buy, buy the whole pair.
Absolutely, but this makes total.
Like a one-hand, one-legged man talking.
This, this totally makes sense when we're talking about this new development and this potential apartment complex. And this, that this is all pieces as we get bigger. And obviously, these people will pay property taxes, but those property taxes are used to pay for these services and if we have more people, we have more fire department. It's just, how much do we get from Nelson?
Again, we're talking fire department, okay? ISO, and I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not wanting to walk all over on it, but with a fire. You're technically supposed to have about four people on the scene, you have a command person, a pump operator and two people to go in. Okay? You're supposed to have two in, two out, or you can go in to relieve the first two in. So you have to have at least four. They changed that and said the pump operator and the chief or person in command can be the other two out because everyone's grabbing a hard time getting the people to be there. I think at times we probably have that problem here now, don't we? And this is what I'm talking about.
I believe you.
We need to address it. The days of business owners and locals volunteering is fading. They don't understand. We used to, when Marty and I first got started, there was business owners would lock their door and head to the fire department to go fight a fire. When we started doing medicals, they couldn't close up every time you had to go. So, but it's, it's a totally different picture now.
Well, the mayor emeritus was on the fire department. I, I, I get it.
Well, with, with the growth that we've experienced here in the last couple of years and years coming, our numbers are just gonna continue.
Right, that was sort of my point.
Hoping to be proactive instead of react.
And I'm saying.
So what would be the difference, what would be the difference in cost in terms of doing two versus one?
Well, you're doubling the wages, but however, however you're gonna pay them, so, but.
Would be a difference of seventy.
But we're also health insurance.
Plus, plus insurance. Plus benefits. Agreed, we start with one.
And there will be days where they'd be sitting there doing nothing.
So, uh, there will be the.
That's not gonna happen.
Oh, I mean, unless you had duties for them to do and, and it's possible that, you know, well, it's not that they're gonna be there doing calls, we're just waiting for the calls. But they have to be available to do the call when the call comes in.
Couple of my suggestions was and I, talking with Mike and Carla, that, um, we could maintain our own facilities, our building, our mowing, our shoveling snow. Um, and then we could also help maintain the hydrants, flush them, grease them, paint them. You know, and that would take a, a load off the DPW, cause I know their short staff also.
The what, that's kind of what I'm talking about.
That, you know, as far as mowing the, the cemetery, we would have to mean some kind of transportation from the cemetery back.
Talking about the cemetery, you got parks within walking distance.
Yep, um, and it, it, he would not be sitting there sleeping or he or she. I think you're playing solitaire or anything, and there's, there's, uh, we have a cleaning service now that, uh, comes in. That may be something that, uh, could be assisted with.
I've seen your call numbers, I can't imagine that anybody's gonna be, if they get an opportunity to get a twenty-minute nap somewhere, well. Amen.
Well, Mr. Gross will attest, if I put a little, uh, if I'm under a little pressure, I can be a jerk. There will be nobody playing solitaire.
I'm not concerned. I guess I'm concerned, I'm confused with what the issue is of having two people hired as opposed to one.
Just the money.
Well, with the red line, when you get to the bottom of this budget, you're gonna see that we're.
Pulling from fun down.
Okay, but this is kind, this is important. I would say that this is one of the most important things that are.
Well, but right now, what we're proposing is to have a full-time staff person.
Which we haven't had.
And Marty, so there's the two people for medicals, and of course, we've been doing okay with, you know, our current staff. I'd like to see us go at least a year, evaluate how it works. And if we still need another person, the next year we add another person.
And what I would say is if our calls go up dramatically in six months, please come back.
We can always revisit. Yeah, I, I, I would be content right now at this point in time with one full-time person, plus myself. However, if, if something dramatically happened to me, I fell off the fire truck again. Get laid up.
Oh, Marty.
Well, I have done it several times, I'm thinking that your girls has too.
We, you mentioned weevil or it may wobble. I was gonna remind you that weevils wobble, but they do, don't fall down. We do fall down.
That's natural, we do fall, so, okay. But, uh, that's my proposal, um, to the council. That door is always open, I, I'm willing to answer any questions, if I can't answer you with an honest answer, I'll make something up. This is Paul over there giggling. But, uh, I, I would, uh, I would like to start with one fall and then we'll work.
I think that's amazing, we've advocated for a while that you needed a full-time person.
Is there anybody interested in, in that?
I have a couple of internal, uh, people that talked with Mr. Womack. I've met them several times, I met Mr. Womack and it's because we accept their application of being made at the heart.
That's right.
I, I wonder sometimes, yes.
Were you talking in the good ear?
I didn't mean to throw us off track here, I was just, I'm, I, be honest with you, this was something I was thinking about while I was in there. Been about, what, seven years ago now?
Uh, probably eleven years.
That's been longer than.
I have, we've had ten, ten years as a dispatcher, so that's why I also accept your, uh, proposal, but just know that I personally am totally open to making adjustments. That's super important.
Well, I don't think statement was, that statement was.
No, I mean, I don't want people get like burnt out and like making, you guys make jokes about like them playing solitaire, but you want them when it's crazy. So sometimes maybe you're not doing anything, but when you have all these wires down, well, then it was great to have that extra person.
Yeah.
Or when you have three crazy medicals or whatever cr- crash, so. I get it, that, that's, uh. Relax, but you do need to be on point when.
Appreciate that. I promise that we will take a look at this in one, three years.
Okay.
See where we're at.
Okay.
Yeah, um, you're still gonna have the, as many part-time people, you're not cutting back anything else, you're adding. Yeah, I just, you know, cause I know you might wanna try and be sneaky, so.
Aw, really?
I did that he, uh, had a good ride, uh, he appreciated everything we've done. And he decided it was time for them to walk away and enjoy life a little more without having to leave parties and birthdays and. So I'm down one person, but, uh, if we hire. So I'm down one person, but uh, if we hire internal, we will still make, right now with me, we have nineteen. And this new person, if we hired inside, it would still be nineteen. We're not getting rid of anybody, no.
Are your part-time's, your, well, are they considered part-time and not voluntary or? They're two separate. Eight, okay.
Volunteer, there's been some discussion volunteers, they do us nothing. Uh, I, I can't ask these guys to do what they do.
Right.
Although when Jerry and I joined, we were getting hundreds, twenty dollars a year.
Didn't know that when I got fired. Marty, and it's, it's another. How many certified trained firefighters do we have during the day?
Well, the next question be easier.
Well, this one's easy, cause I'm sure you got the answer. Cause I have an idea.
Three to five.
Okay.
Depending on work schedule.
And this, that's the key. Most everybody is medical. That was what we were having to get. Uh, we're lucky right now, the ISO doesn't check to see if it's the certified firefighters who are showing up at fire runs. It used to be that that's one of the things they kept track of. It wasn't the number of bodies you had there, it was how many of them that were qualified. And we're fortunate now that they're not doing that. So, uh, so they're taking total count from what you told me of the people there.
I, I think Mr. Girls said, I've only had three people out of nineteen that are not firefighter slash medics.
Daytime.
Only three of them.
Right, I'm talking about daytime. How many do we have here? That's.
And I, um, our, our staffing on days, uh, leaves a lot to be.
And that's why having them on days is important and that's what I was getting at, so. And again, it's nothing to do with your command. It's not, it's just a sign of the times.
Can we, can we move along? I mean, I appreciate what you're saying, but.
This isn't important enough, so let's move on.
Not your fault. And we.
One is better than none.
We are supportive of that.
Appreciate that very much. Ms. Falcon?
Okay, moving on to street lighting. There are several streetlights in town that we pay the bill for, so. Part of maintaining the city.
Is that per light or an actual electrical bill?
And, um, some are several on one bill. Streetlights, we get three or four a month, streetlight bills.
Line item is for the whole. The line item is for the whole thing.
One line item, but three or four bills, just for streetlights.
Okay.
Different areas of the town. Next, we have cemetery. A little increase here, little increase in wages. Just trying to maintain a beautiful cemetery like we have for many years.
And it's never mowed enough. You know, that's always people feel like it's never mowed enough.
They spend a ton of time out there mowing.
I know they do, I know they do. I, I'm not, I didn't mean that as a, um.
I know you didn't, but it's.
It.
They spent a lot of time.
They spend a lot of time out there and then, but it's still just.
Some, some people think it's never enough.
Yeah. I think it's a very, um, the history teacher would say it's a very important piece. Of our community. We have a section of our cemetery that goes back to the Civil War. And, um, I know that our clerk has done documentation to get all of that. Up online so people can find graves if they need to. It's. It's an important, so we, I mean, we talk about string trimming and grass and, but it, it's an important thing to maintain.
Next, we have planning, our planning department. Um, we have budgeted this year twenty-five thousand under professional services expense. We emailed our current planner from Williams and Works and asked for an estimate for a new master plan. Um, the total was forty to fifty thousand.
Oh, boy.
Mr. Womack said, maybe if we could do twenty, fifty percent this year, fifty percent next year, so we put twenty-five thousand in there.
It's also partially, if you're gonna have a new manager on board, you might wanna have them with at least a year under their belt to assist with that in the future.
What is this for?
So the master plan, the old master plan was, uh, completed by the previous, previous, previous city plan.
Yeah, it's been a while. Carbon, Carmen, right?
And E with LSL planning, I think it can be better.
Yeah.
Uh, but these are not easy to do, cheap dot.
What is the master, what is?
It's our city vision. It's our, it's our overarching plan.
It'll look like. Basically a plan which details if you want this area of your town to have apartment complex, this is how you'll do the zoning in the future and.
And should there be, I think our previous master plan had the build a library and are you building a new fire station?
This expense seems crazy to me, especially given the conversation we just had about a fire person. Or a piece of paper, I.
It's not for a piece of paper.
Meetings.
Required.
Community engagement.
Of course, we could go out and do a RFP to see what other people would do, but this is one of those where you could do it as cheaply as probably ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, you don't wanna.
Current master plan and just, you know, updating it. I don't like our current master plan. I don't think it was well done to begin. So, that's.
Would you?
How much did we pay for the last one?
I have no idea.
No, but the overarching master plan.
How often do we have to do this?
So the last one was completed seven years ago when I.
I was gonna say, I think the state requires.
There's some requirements for us to get loans and so forth, though, and grants. We have to have a master plan, is that true?
To be updated every so often.
Probably the rec plan.
Yeah, the rec plan has to be updated every five years. You know, part of the reason why I'm proposing this is seven years ago, the town was a different place.
Yes.
Yes.
We've put together, I think, sixty, uh, ordinances in the last seven years. Significant portion of those are planning and zoning. The planning commission and this board have done a significant amount of different visioning for the future of this community. I don't remember if apartment complexes out in the HC district were anticipated seven years ago, but we're talking about doing that now. So I, I don't know if it's worth fifty thousand dollars, but that's what it costs.
Mm-hmm, so are you, are you saying that you want it on and that it should be on this budget so that we're getting like? Half of it and then next year.
Yeah, we're gonna allocate half of it for this year to actually then put the other half in next year to do it that next year.
If we were, if I was staying, then we probably could have done it all this year, cause I've got the background knowledge, but, you know. Again, when you get to the end of this, you're gonna see we're in the red and this is twenty-five thousand dollars we'll be saving.
That we'll put in next year.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear on what we were doing.
Things like the master plan, so the struggle that we had with the multifamily housing. If the master plan had been in place to deal with that zoning and what those documents were supposed to look like. When those people implemented that, we would not have had to have that drama. I mean, that's the, that's what they're for. I mean, Darla's kinda nodding her head, am I right?
It, it, it's, it's complicated. We can talk about it for a lot.
I mean, it's really not worth a discussion. I'm just irritated that we're.
No, it's, it's very.
Pay for him that much and then we can't have a fire or something.
Two years, we've done paying for it and then we could use it for a new fire.
I'm super excited we're getting one.
I'm very excited.
I've been asking for that for a long time.
Next department is our code enforcement department. Um, so here is another line item, professional services about halfway down. Um, current budget years, current year budget is ten thousand. We've already spent twelve thousand nine hundred. We're upping that to fifteen thousand. Our code enforcer, due to, you know, the extent of her job does.
It's a lot.
In court a lot and we need legal representation there, so.
Yes.
We, we've been very aggressive this past year with code enforcement, so I, I could actually see that number going down next year.
We fixed a lot of it.
It'll never go away.
No, but.
Something new.
Next, we have community promotions. Um, so the big jump here is the very last line, city property annual taxes. Sixty-four thousand nine hundred, that's not a mistake. That is all of the West Street property is now, it's available to be sa- for sale. So we have to pay taxes on that. Just over sixteen thousand of that will come back to us. That's part of our fifteen mills that comes back to the city.
Yeah, which sounds crazy, but it is how it works.
That's. We did take something like a hundred thousand dollars of value off that with some, um, order review.
Where, where do the taxes go? Like who take them?
It comes to the city and then we pay it to the school and to the county and to the GRCC ISD.
Right.
Okay, all the taxing units. But then we'll get our fifteen mills back to the city.
Okay, so.
So a couple of other minor issues in here, um, uh, we upped the Halloween expenses. And I'm gonna work with the library to work on the trunk or treating portion of that. Um, and then we did put five thousand dollars in here for additional library programming. Because one of the things we've talked about is if we were to go to KDL, uh, the staff would like to maintain their current programming. And so, uh, I got an estimate for that. The estimate was about four thousand dollars for all the programming that they do.
Sure.
Uh, so I'd like to reserve that for that, uh, type of programming if we end up going to KDL.
Yeah, and library programming is just so important.
So that KDL doesn't help with any of that program?
So KDL does their own programming.
So anything extra we have to pay for?
Right.
Yes.
Anything that, cause we could just do no programming.
Cause I was thinking they didn't incorporate.
That they would pay for it.
Yeah, I thought they.
Well, they give you a chunk. But there's, right now, we don't even know, like.
Yeah, we don't know if we're going there.
What we, what we're looking at is the library board has a twenty-two thousand dollar deficit. And we need money to support the programs that we care about. Like red flannel and Halloween and so, which is money that Kami has been coming to us like time each time.
So is this just assuming that we're not going to KDL about what you're saying?
Well.
Status quo, this is what we're putting in.
So I think this past year, we had three thousand in there for senior citizen programming and that was a result of the senior citizens center. Closing last year. We wanna make sure to have some programming available to make up for that difference. So I said, well, for two thousand extra bucks, we can basically, you know, uh, go into the possibility of KDL. With the five thousand, well, four thousand dollars, um, for all the programming that, you know, the staff is saying, well, if we go to KDL, then we lose all this programming. Well, you know, no, cause we have money available.
I thought one of the major plus, pluses with KDL is that we could have our own take on programming on top of their programming and they said that they would pay for it.
There is a piece of it that they will pay for, but that's again, an entire.
Not what we were told.
What they said is, here's our package of programming. We will also give you additional funding for specific programs if you ask. But we don't know, like they have a summer reading program that is their block of summer reading program. Okay, if we want something specific that's beyond that, we could ask for it. We can also just budget to make sure we have it. But right now, there's no world where KDL is even a thing that's happening.
Right, I understand that.
We need to make sure that we have funding because the library itself doesn't have the funding for this stuff.
Right, but the, one of the major sells to the public in terms of the library. Is that we would have that five thousand dollars to then put into something else because KDL would be paying for it.
Sure.
Well, yeah, I'm happy to have the money budgeted.
Okay, yes, okay, that's my question, is that like.
But right now, that's not.
Yep, we're in the same.
We need.
Did we move the summer reading program one hundred into the library programming then? Or we're just not doing the summer reading program then?
So again, we're, we're in this very difficult phase right now where we don't know if the future holds. I've had extensive conversations with, uh, Kami Howell, the library director about the future. And of course, her staff and the public are concerned what's gonna happen this year.
Right.
So, uh, this might end up going towards this year's summer reading program. If the current library board doesn't fund that. Uh, this might go towards future programming through the KDL if KDL says, well, we're not gonna do red final festival. So now the city has five thousand bucks that we can allocate towards that if that's something that we find important.
It's the idea of trying to protect the library when we.
I understand that, but specifically the summer reading program had a hundred dollars in it for last year, it has zero dollars now. So did we move that into the five thousand for the library programming?
I think that's required to stay on your books for three years past any dollars that were ever in there.
Oh, okay.
I think that's an accounting.
I just know people like the summer reading.
Oh, yeah.
Like every reading program, but the winter and the summer ones. So I was just making sure that we had funds.
Yeah, so thank you for specifying why you're asking the question, because I have had that conversation with Kami. And I promised her that the summer reading program will go on, we'll find money for it.
Okay.
Cause they currently don't have money for the summer reading programs, is my understanding, based upon the Monday night meeting that Rose and I attended.
It's a hu- it's a hundred dollars that it costs?
No, it costs several thousand.
Okay, that's what I thought.
The, the library itself doesn't have a budget for it based upon the meeting that we attended Monday night. And they have a twenty-two thousand dollar deficit and they're saying they're gonna have to completely fundraise for the summer reading.
So then if it costs a thousand dollars or two thousand, three thousand dollars, how are we paying for that?
Well, technically the library should be paying for it for itself. But if, you know, push comes to shove and we get to a point where they're desperate for money and they can't put on the programming, otherwise we have five thousand bucks here.
That's what this five thousand dollars is allocated for, is we are here to catch the library.
No, I understand. There's just a line item for a summer reading program and a line item for library programming.
Yes, and I think again, I think that's partially, I think for three years after.
Okay, which is fine. Okay, very good.
Maintain it.
All right, thanks.
A hundred dollars was for the sidewalk chalk piece of the summer reading program that we funded.
We put that in there this year, except for important.
No.
So you should come back here with a bucket of chalk.
You know what's gonna happen. I'm gonna go get a hundred bucks out of the ATM and drop it off with Kami.
Okay, that's what I was, that's why I asked, cause I was like, um, you can sign me up to personally support our reading program.
Also, I donated a nice reading tablet to the library.
Nice, thank you.
As a prize.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay. And we're gonna have to, I'm assuming based upon what we heard Monday night and the deficit that they're currently running. We're gonna have to be prepared to be flexible.
Got some good news for you.
Okay.
Be tuned.
Cool.
Okay.
I'm just saying, like, I think we're gonna have to be prepared to be flexible to support the library if needed.
I have the parks department next. Little increase here, a, a good chunk of it is professional services again. Um, Mr. Womack has asked some companies to put some plans together for future grant funding, grants that we can apply for.
This is the.
We need the plans to apply for them.
Our plans on the shelf so we can.
Right, we have talked about this, yeah. Which I think is an excellent idea.
This is partly to update some of the older parks equipment and.
So I think one of them is, uh, streetscaping on Main Street, uh, help take advantage of the curb bump outs. That is in green spaces. Uh, one of them is updating Riddle Park. Some of that equipment's from the seventies, it's something I played on as a kid. Um, and then some of it is part of Morley Park. You know, some place structures that are well out of date, should be removed. But I think maybe it's a different, maybe Fishbeck is doing this. The current internal dirt road that we have there.
Yes.
Like to have that, I'd like to have that removed. Turning to an actual walking path of some kind. So I think we're paying for that separately.
Part of the ten thousand.
Obviously, they'd have to come back to city council at some point, but we need the plans to do it for it.
Yes, yes.
And engineering always costs.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's just, well, but I mean, you know.
It's required.
Build a house without planes.
Right.
And then the last line item there, um, that's the wrap grant. It was budgeted current year. The project probably won't happen till after July first, so our, our, we had to re-budget for that in the new fiscal year.
Sure. Makes sense.
Um, debt service, this is our.
Funds.
Rain assessment payment. Fifty-three thousand.
And that's a ten, ten year?
And they're fifteen.
Fifteen?
Long time.
Yeah.
This is our third payment. And we have transfers out, so any, um, general fund obligation bond payment, the, the funds are budgeted for in the general fund. And transferred to the general obligation fund. So the hundred and six thousand at the top there, that's our two bond, two bonds that we have, two thousand seven capital improvement bond. And then the West Street bond, that's the hundred and six. Then we have forty-one thousand. That's the hundred and six. Then we have forty-one thousand, that's our Act four twenty-five payments to Solon Township and Nelson Township. Just a few parcels in Nelson Township. And then basically gifting fifty thousand to the equipment fund because the rental money just doesn't cover to maintain the equipment that we have. That's the end of part one. So that concludes our general fund. I know there's no totals on this, but I do have the totals in front of me. Total expenses, all the departments, we just went through two million, seven hundred twenty-four thousand, four hundred sixty dollars. Which leaves a shortfall of sixty-two thousand, eight hundred ten dollars. So if we put five thousand more for legal, that would that would add to this shortfall.
So we should allocate that from the fund balance?
Fund balance, yes. When we.
Sixty-two in the red?
Sixty-two thousand, eight hundred ten dollars.
Includes the two hundred fifty thousand dollars in marijuana money that we got this year. So we're we're accomplishing a lot this year and there's a lot of new costs being added this year. It's part of growing pains.
That's not actually too as bad as I.
Relatively large, I mean, we have a healthy fund balance.
Yes.
So it's totally appropriate to take, I mean, in some of these expenses are capital improvements that.
And one-time things.
Yeah, I mean, eight hundred thousand dollars we're putting into Main Street.
Oh, in your packet, I see I accidentally put some things in the wrong place, so you're gonna skip the page.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I was like. Oh, I guess we're done.
Okay, here we are, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty.
That's pretty, I mean, I feel, not good.
Well, I mean, so the goal is always to budget your revenues to your expenses and end up with basically zero.
Well, yeah.
But, you know. One of the first uh slides you saw is year after year after year, the last seven years, we put money back into the fund balance. You know, uh I wouldn't accuse my department heads of maybe uh adding a little extra money to their budgets each year. But they do, which is fine. And then at the end of the year, if we don't spend it, it goes back into fund down.
Well, and as our community gets bigger, they should. I mean, there should be more money for fire departments as we have more people that need service. There should be more money for roads and sidewalks as we have more people that need to drive on them and walk on them and the city's literally getting physically larger. As we four twenty-five.
Plus, that's with extra full-time employees. I'm quite satisfied, actually. All of my complaint, like this is, I think it looks great.
All things considered.
Yeah.
I think it's an excellent budget.
That's just the general fund.
Yeah.
We have several more to go.
Okay, but it's, no, but it's it's excellent.
So next we have perpetual care fund. This used to be at the end in a seven eleven fund. State of Michigan, now it's a one-five-one fund, so it comes next after the general fund. It's a required fund to have because we have a cemetery. Uh very little activity. The perpetual care fund?
No, very little.
A lot of activity, this one does not.
Good, we're not burying any lives.
Yep.
My first day of vacation.
Questions on perpetual care? Our street funds, major street and local street are funded by gas and weight tax. We have about seventy-five percent major street and twenty-five percent local street. Although we have more local roads, the funding goes to major street, seventy-five percent, local street twenty-five percent. Our one and only major project this year in major street is the Main Street reconstruction. Definitely in need of some repair.
That's a big chunk of money.
It is a very big chunk of money. Yep, so the next page shows in the major street fund. Um we'll have to be taking four hundred and twenty-six thousand from fund balance. Um and that's pretty much the the whole chunk of the main city's portion of the Main Street reconstruction project.
And we've been putting money aside for that.
We have, yep. So the the Act fifty-one money, three hundred thirty-nine thousand. Covers all the rest of the expenses in the major street fund. Plowing, traffic, non-motorized, uh maintenance. So we have in the major street fund, available balance, five hundred forty-six thousand. Cash available plus two hundred and five thousand is what we've accumulated over the last several years. To pay for the city's portion of the bridge bridge project and the Main Street project. So we do have the money in fund balance to make this project happen. Um hopefully it doesn't go up anymore, but who knows?
Who knows?
So that that's.
Well, but as the mayor indicated, we're trusted with these funds to then complete the project.
Correct, yeah.
The bank doesn't plow the pavement, pave the roads.
And it can only be spent on major street fund, you know, major street, so.
And that's the point.
Right, I have a general question, budget question. Uh when we have leftover money from one year to the next, does it stay in that line item? Or does it all get moved, removed back into the?
Fund balance.
And then we reallocate.
Correct, that's why we're we're, the very top line item appropriation from fund balance, we need four hundred and twenty-six thousand in revenue. To cover the expense, proposed expenses.
Okay, alright, thanks.
On the local street side.
Which just, just to real quickly, the amount that we're absorbing out of fund balance, considering the extra that this is. Is actually pretty impressive. I mean, we should have to be digging deeper than we are.
Yeah, thank God we're getting some grant funding to cover.
Right.
Portion of it.
So, but just saying, that's a.
Yeah. So on the local street side, we are going to have to transfer a hundred and twenty-four thousand from fund balance. In addition to the hundred and thirteen thousand Act fifty-one money that we get. Um in addition to. So every year, we can transfer twenty-five percent of the major street Act fifty-one money to the local street fund. We haven't done that. That's what built up the two hundred and five thousand in the major street fund for those two large projects.
Because once it goes to the street fund, it can't come back.
Correct, so.
Which is why we don't necessarily just put it there all to begin with.
Right. So.
Yeah, but I didn't.
Eighty-four thousand of this budget is twenty-five percent from major street. Transferring it to local street to do some paving on local streets. This year, we're looking at, actually, these streets have been on our list for a while. Due to other projects, we weren't able to accomplish them. Um Park Street from Muskegon to Ash, three blocks there. Beach Street from Fifth to Seventh, that's two blocks. And then hoping to try out the ultra-thin concept that we've been looking at for a couple of years now, um to redo West Street. That's very heavily traveled by large trucks.
Large trucks, yeah.
If we can get, keep West Street in good shape, hopefully it'll last much longer. So total paving for the year, two hundred and nineteen thousand. Accomplish those tasks.
Water has a similar thing. You can't take money out of the water fund to use in anything else. You can take money out of the general fund to put in the water fund, but once it's there, it now has to be. Be in the water fund.
We really don't like doing that.
I'm just trying to, for someone who hasn't done this before.
The utility funds should be self uh paying.
Yes, but if there's a thing and we have to fix it, and I'm not advocating we should do that, I'm just saying that when. It can go one direction is what I'm trying to say.
Yep, that makes sense.
Streets work the same way.
Next, we have rubbish collection fund. This is our um. All leaf pickup and our brush pickup twice a year. So brush pickup is coming up in early May. Um we're proposing to levy point five mills again, which will bring in fifty-two thousand, six hundred dollars. Um Mister Romack asked me, well, what what would point four mills? Can we reduce it a little bit and accomplish the same thing? Point four mills would bring in forty-one thousand, seven ninety, not quite covering the proposed expenses for the year. We do have sixty-four thousand in fund balance.
We do like, like, point four or five?
Or, yeah, I was just gonna say, four point five?
Could.
Would that get us there?
The only thing I would, you know, I asked her lots of questions. Sometimes it's just a question, I don't intend to do it. Um one of the reasons uh I would be a little opposed to that is, as you guys know, our summer storms have gotten worse and worse.
They have.
In fact, there's storms supposed to hit right now, so.
Yes, this whole week, we should be expecting big old thunder boomers.
Yeah, and so uh it's it's just a way of life right now. And so if we have a big storm come through and we have to do more collecting, you know, it's nice to have that money available to us.
It is.
Yeah.
You know, I I'd like to lower our taxes at some point, um but maybe we do that through the. General fund millage and not through this specific fund. I think our tax rate overall is going down this year anyways because of.
Bonds, we have a bond falling off?
I think the school millage is going down a little bit and then also the fire station millage, I think, is going to go down a little bit. Overall, the rate should go down.
And I was gonna say, has the bond for the, that we did for the um, the cleanup for the um, where the heart is? Has that one fallen off?
No, that's part of the two thousand seven capital improvement bond that I.
Okay.
I think we do have a couple coming up shortly. I think we still have to get to that.
It's fine, just.
So it's, I I guess it's a possibility we could reduce this, um but, you know.
We should leave it at five for now.
One of those things like, uh every year, you're just not quite sure.
And if we have a couple of years where maybe we don't quite need it all, we could drop to one.
We can levy up to two legally.
Right. We don't wanna levy any more than we need to, but at the same time, we wanna levy what we need to. We're, it, the whole point of taxes is to have the money to provide the service. But want provided. Need provided when we're talking about things like fire departments.
DDA fund. Gonna give a little overview, Mike?
Yeah, sorry, I forgot. Um so the DDA, as you guys know, um. A little difficult to get their budget sorted out every single year. Although I'm sure Rose would say we're doing an excellent job, right?
Excellent.
So I think the total uh for that fund is about fifty-ish thousand dollars. Um but we're we're gonna try something new this year. Um you know, one of the major complaints that we had. One of the major talking points we had at their recent strategic planning session was how to improve the looks of the downtown area. So we're in the final stages of approving a facade and signage grant program. Uh where the DDA was, I think fifteen thousand dollars is what we're planning to allocate this year. Where if a business comes to the DDA with a nice plan, they'll, you know, pay up to twenty-five percent or up to fifty percent. Uh to match a grant or a building to be revamped or a signage to be revamped. So, you know, we're going around with numbers like that. But, you know, the DDA has been, I think, very happy over the last couple of years with the amount of money they've been able to invest in the community. Uh just sometimes you just can't get it done in time. So we should have that approved at the April, late April meeting.
They, and they use some of their money for the pocket park grant.
Oh, yeah, they they've done a lot of that.
And there's some parking lot.
Yeah, so the problem with the, the problem with the DDA is even at fifty-two thousand dollars, it's not a ton of money to accomplish. The kind of expensive things that they would like to do. Um so, you know, I I've encouraged them to, oh, put ten thousand in this budget and then go to the city and say, well, we've got ten thousand. You have ten thousand to match, so you can actually accomplish quite a bit that way. But, you know, it's similar to the library fund. Um by and large, they will present you with something and then you just say yes at once.
So the library fund, um I was just telling um the director this afternoon that um. One of the reasons I wanted to schedule this budget workshop later in March is to wait till the border review occurs. So when we put the the library budget together. Six, eight weeks ago, um the estimated tax revenue was a hundred and nineteen thousand. That's the city's one point two 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 five. I don't know what, if that's actually gonna be the millage rating in this year, but so a hundred and nineteen thousand after border review. Uh taxable value, this new number for the city's taxes will be a hundred and thirty-one thousand. So that's. An additional. Um twelve thousand, five hundred dollars.
That takes some of their twenty-two thousand dollars.
So the twenty-two thousand, eight sixty deficit is now ten thousand, three sixty.
Because the city's paying more tax.
I I don't have access to their taxable value at this point. I mean, I could probably go on the county and do some digging and. So I mean, realistically, their their tax taxable value went up too because everybody's rate of inflation this year was five percent.
Kami has a question. I would love to recognize, the chair would love to recognize Ms. Howell.
Thank you. I actually, if you guys don't mind, I would like, I don't wanna speak on behalf of KDL. Cuz I don't work for them, but I would like to address perhaps um some. So I could clear some things up for the council members.
Sure.
Okay, so KDL does have programming. However, their programming is for all twenty-some branches. Then each branch. Has their own specific community programming. So Rockford has the Rockford Rocks, Reading Rocks. Um Cedar wouldn't have that, but Rockford takes care of that. So the things that Cedar would have are the the Easter programming that we have coming up next weekend. Um any expenses like with having the horse come. The Christmas time, big open house that we have. Those are the types of things that are community-specific. That Mike was talking about, we we don't wanna lose cuz that's what makes our library our library. I, does that shed any light on that?
It absolutely does.
Yeah, I mean, you said a horse, is that a miniature horse?
It was a miniature Shetland pony, yeah.
Is that Shetland pony named Little Sebastian?
Oh my God, please say it is.
Yeah, I wish I could tell you it was, but his name was actually Flicka. So I don't, I hope that makes that a little bit clear or not. I'm not saying that we're going with them, however. Um if if that is what the residents decide they would like to do. This is what would help keep the community flavor there.
And I could give an example of with red flannel, the library does a program called Read to Ride. That you read books and get tickets to ride carnival rides, like I personally have sponsored that the last ten years. In memory of my dad.
Yes.
So that's like that kind of thing, like the library. Like red flannel has always worked with the library to come up with a sponsor for that. So it's the same kind of thing with, when they come to us for Halloween candy and when they, I mean, that's.
Yes.
We do that now.
Yes, so and just so the council knows. The summer reading program has always been funded by the community.
It's always been a fun drive.
It's always been a fun drive and that's okay. It's just. It it was never part of just the budget.
Right.
Um when I prepared this budget this year, I kinda took a little different stance than the previous director. I took out anything that I did not feel was guaranteed money because grants and donations, you just don't know. And I wanted, I wanted the library board to see what we, what they really had to work with. And then what needed to be done to increase because we wanna grow. We wanna keep having flickas come. But we, you know, we need to look forward to do that and we can't do that if we don't have a clear picture.
Absolutely.
So yes, there is a deficit. The city is graciously. Um, the city is graciously collecting more, and we are very thankful for that. There is some money in, in the library's fund balance that the library board did on Monday night approve taking the shortfall from. However, that's not a long-term solution. They know that. So, it, you know, we're, we're making progress.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Kami. You're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you, Rose.
Fabulous.
And, yeah, and Rose, just to let you know that, that program you wanted to go to is next week, on the fifth.
Okay, I'll be ready.
Okay.
I'll get all dolled up.
Okay, good.
Anything else on the library?
No, ma'am. Um, I will just, this isn't a budget thing, but, um, Mrs. Ringler, uh, Karen Ringler, who served on the library board and recently, um, retired, mm, some health issues, some medical issues, I'm gonna be giving her a You Give, You Make a Difference Award. So I'll need to, I think we already, you already have it, but I'm gonna do it at the women's club. Rose, set that up. We were trying to fit, and I'm, I'm break this week, so I'm gonna try to make that happen.
Wonderful.
Next, we have the general obligation fund. So this is where I said it's budgeted in the general fund, but transferred to this fund, and that, this is where the check is cut to make the bond payment.
Right.
Um, so right here is the bond, the two thousand seven capital improvement bond. And it shows what, what, um, proceeds were used to purchase fire truck equipment, fifty-eight South Main Street demolition and restoration costs of the community building, Steel Tech Foundry, one thirteen, one twenty-five, one thirty-nine North Main Street, um, city's portion of West Street, West Muskegon Street, and the alley heading to the post office.
So. You have a, uh, amortization for when the next bond payments are coming off?
This is paid off in twenty twenty-seven. The next one, um, this is the fire station bond has the current balance, and we will be paying on that till twenty thirty-five. And then the, um, West Street Bond hopefully will be paid off soon with sale of land.
When we, yeah, the plan is that when we sell the land, we'll pay the bond.
If not, it's a ten-year bond, ten-year bond, we'll be paying on it for ten years.
That was a gamble that we took to, to bond the money to make the improvements, to make it so we could sell it.
Is a bond the same thing as a loan?
Um, similar.
Kind of.
Annual interest. Yep, so the money coming in is the same amount going out. So the paid-off bonds, um, two thousand twelve bond was paid off um, in the current year. Principal and interest. That was a big.
Damn, that was a big one.
One and five thousand, yeah, that was a big one.
There was, there was a three million dollar water USDA water.
It's, that's not in here.
Right, but I didn't know when, I'm trying to remember how long that's been. We'll get there, we'll get there.
Yep.
Cause that was a big one.
So here's the sewer fund next, um. I don't think I put anything about the bonds and.
She has pictures.
They're kinda old though.
This was new last year.
Was it? I thought they had all, the pipes were all red now.
Though, this is the lift station.
Oh, the lift station, okay, alright.
The pipes.
I've never been there.
I'll have to, um, ask Gary for some. Um, so we're proposing a two percent rate increase on the ready-to-serve side and the billing side in the sewer fund. Um, will bring us in, um, in total, little, little bit less than current year revenue, projected revenue. Um, on the expense side, this, this is a crazy fund, um, everything either, you know, Gary at the plant bids out, or, or we do internally here in Public Works, the cost of chemicals. Like, almost doubled.
Right.
We have to buy them.
Yes.
We don't have a choice.
Yes.
Um, maintenance on everything is going up.
People don't buy them, you get flint.
Yeah.
We're not doing that.
Right. Um, so you'll see under the treatment plant, under capital outlay, um, we've been budgeting eighty-five thousand for upgrades at the plant for several years now. Eighty-five thousand just isn't enough.
Right.
So we up that to a hundred thousand in the new fiscal year.
Water's expensive.
Um.
And by the way, it's the reason that all the people, all these businesses and these new subdivisions and so on are all coming here is because we have municipal water.
That's right.
Because we have fire hydrants and because, I mean, those cost money.
Right. Towards the bottom, you'll see, um, fifty thousand appropriation to fund balance reserve that, this will be the second year that we put fifty thousand aside to fund a new, um, drain field, which is coming, but.
Yes.
Fifty, hundred thousand won't even touch the cost of that, but the more we can reserve and set aside, the less we'll have to bond for.
Oh, is that a expected five hundred thousand dollar cost or a million?
Million.
Million.
Hello, you guys.
We did three million for the water treatment plant to upgrade it.
So for the first time this year, I don't know if this is helpful or more confusing, depreciation is an expense, but it's a non-cash item.
Sure.
So when we budget, we have to budget for depreciation, so it's in here. But at the bottom, I've subtracted it out, so we're only having to borrow a hundred and forty-four thousand from fund balance instead of three hundred and forty-four thousand.
Right.
What is depreciation is two hundred thousand.
What does that mean?
Assume when you own a thing, it's the last fifty years, you have to put enough depreciation into your budget each year. Then after fifty years, you can pave that thing. So it's like, so let's say you have a car, and your car costs twenty thousand bucks.
Yeah.
Last ten years. That means every single year, you gotta put two thousand bucks aside, so that at the end of ten years, you have twenty thousand bucks to buy a new car.
Or are we actually doing that if we then subtract it from the?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's a mathematical trick, it's, uh, it's an auditing thing.
Okay, above my.
I have to do a monthly entry to.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Charge it.
We are.
Okay, but it's not a check we're cutting to somebody.
Okay.
But it's what we take off of the budget so that it's there.
Correct.
For the next time, when we have to buy it.
Appreciating an asset.
And.
It's going.
Right, and the water treatment plant has a lot of that.
Both water and sewer.
Right, I, the water system.
Yes.
Has a lot of that.
Mm-hmm.
Cause it gets heavy use, it's mostly proprietary.
Yes.
Like, you're not gonna go buy it at Walmart. You know, and there's a lot of it. And it's expensive.
Miles and miles underground.
Mm-hmm.
So unrestricted fund balance, basically cash available in the sewer fund, we have one point four six million. So transferring, showing here a transfer from fund balance is just.
Yeah.
Peanuts, basically. Um, June thirty, twenty twenty-two, we put two hundred and fifty thousand into fund balance. So we have it available.
Yeah. And this is why the closing the water loop out there and that, that conversation that we were having with the apartment complex folks was so important, and I'm not even sure why the water loop at the, like, why the brook, why that is the way it is, but. Right.
I have some opinions about that.
It's a long story.
I gotta tell you, I did not come into this job knowing anything about water, right? But there's been, I, I, I had, I know a person. Who I'd say, okay, tell me like I'm five.
Girl, can you tell us like we're five on the water pump, please?
Um, so here's a picture of our new proposed well site.
Woo!
Going good so far.
Pictures?
Looks very exciting there. Um, so on the water side, we are proposing a five percent rate increase on the ready-to-serve and the, the billing side, um, which will bring in a little bit more revenue on, on those two line items. The, the big jump here is the appropriation from general fund. That's where our ARPA funds are sitting in a reserved account.
Right.
Three hundred eighty-nine thousand.
Right.
Bringing that into the water fund, so we can.
Look like you have a question.
Yep.
Okay.
The ARPA is the American Rescue Plan money?
ARPA?
Yeah.
That was federal dollars.
Yes.
Funneled through the state, funneled to local cities, local municipalities.
That's going towards the six hundred thousand estimated for the new water.
Yep, the new well, six.
Nice.
Big chunk of it, that we were not anticipating when we started on this.
Like, that's like a grant, is what it is?
Yeah, it's, it's the Biden money.
American Rescue Plan.
It's our money that Biden allotted.
Well, it's, but it's that, it's that basically, not again to sound like the history teacher, but it's this new, new deal that they came out with that has this huge check for infrastructure. But we started this not knowing that was coming. Just knowing we're gonna have to have another well.
Mike.
So we got kinda lucky.
Did we buy that property yet?
Oh, we do have an option contract, though.
Okay.
We have a, a set price that it would cost us.
Uh-huh.
Um, which is more than fair, but, yeah, that will be fifty or sixty thousand bucks.
Is that buying that whole lot back there or just a portion of it?
Oh, so, you know, it's based on how many acres we're gonna need of it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but part of the discussion and negotiation with the property owner was, uh, you know, we're gonna need this northeast corner of it, we'd need, I think, three hundred feet around, you know.
And then we need act, like easement access?
Yep, but they also had intended on putting, um, a couple of single-family homes out there. It doesn't affect us in any way, so if they wanna do that, great.
Yeah.
Also means it's less acreage that we're gonna buy.
Uh-huh.
And so part of that depends on how much they want and how much we need for.
Mm-hmm.
I think that measuring hasn't happened yet.
No, but it's part of the contract we do have.
Excellent, thank you.
So water fund, we have, um, cash available, one point five five one.
Yeah, it's, cause the water fund's been in, like, I don't wanna say trouble, but it's been
It's been dis-shealthy.
Underfunded for a very long time. And I know that we pay, you know, people, it's hard to pay water bills, I understand that, me too.
Mm-hmm.
But I also come from a place where.
Bad water.
Bad water, and that's not gonna happen here. We used to do this by like a use-by-hour kinda thing where we, but it's, it's not really enough, right?
Well, I mean, when you have mild winters, the machinery isn't out there being used. Needed to maintain the product. So we are showing the fifty thousand preparation from general fund to help out. Um, last year we did eighty thousand from fund balance as well.
We're back to the depreciation dollars, and we have to pay those depreciation dollars on the snowplow, even when it doesn't plow snow.
Uh, just so everyone's on the same page, you know, part of the snowplow, plowing, you know, the roads and, I don't know, fifty bucks an hour, whatever we charge, uh, that money is coming from the act fifty-one dollars.
Right.
So if we don't transfer it by using it to this fund, it stays in the major street or local street fund um, that we can then use to pave a road later on.
Right.
The money's not disappearing if it's up, it just stays in one fund versus a no.
The last major piece of equipment we purchased was, um, five years ago. So, um, Bill is looking at the end of the fiscal year, um, maybe doing a similar thing, financing at the back hole.
Okay. I was just gonna say, so what else do we need?
Yeah, that goes in bad shape.
I, that surprises me not at all. It's probably older than me. Maybe not quite, but.
Other than that, I mean, one of those that really have a lot of cash to buy new equipment, so we
Yeah.
Maintain what we have.
Sure. Makes sense.
And the last sheet is just kind of all on one sheet, the money we're setting aside for certain products, you know, certain items, um, capital items that we have funded for a one point six million capital there.
That was the capital expense line items?
Yes.
Do we need, is, sorry?
I was just gonna say, I, I've, I've been asked this question several times, um, so part of what we have as a city in assets are buildings. Right? Like, City Hall is an asset, correct? The fire station is an asset. Is the library listed as an asset for the city?
Uh, we own the building.
Okay, that is what I'm asking. So I, I keep being asked that question in a variety of different ways.
I could provide the, uh, actual deeds to the building.
I just, but if we're declaring it again as part of our assets, then we probably own it.
If you don't depreciate it.
No.
Like we do water lines.
No, 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 but do we depreciate City Hall? Well, that's what I'm saying, but it's.
General fixed assets are depreciated.
Are what they are.
Correct, but they're still our asset. They're still listed as our asset. And the library is listed as one of our assets. So, which would mean, cause we probably can't, like, claim the library in Rockford as one of our assets, because it's not. I mean, I'm just, I, I don't know, that's a very, I, I've not been clear on how to answer that question.
I, I think the answer is anybody who's asking that question doesn't understand the question.
Okay.
They don't understand the question. I, I think, and I, I really desperately do not wanna go off into a tangent, but I think there's a lot of gobbledygook and magical thinking going on right now about the reality of the situation with the library. You know, we, we have a city attorney who drafted all documents, I'm also an attorney. Um, as far as I'm concerned, everything's been done correctly, and the city is in charge.
Good enough, that answered my question. And then the attorney answered it in a different way, but.
Nicer than I said it, yeah.
Well, the attorney said, you lease the library like you own it, you lease it out. Like, you take a lease, you can't lease something you, to someone that you don't own. So, he said, you lease it like you own it.
So what was our total total in the red?
Like sixty-two?
Normally do it by budget. Um, so each individual one as a plus or negative.
Alright, nevermind.
It was what, sixty-two in the general fund?
General funds.
But as you were seeing with the sewer fund and the water fund, there's depreciation cost and, you know.
Yeah, you're supposed to, I mean, like, we have to have lots in, like, sewer and water fund.
And like the roads, we save money up for a couple of years, and then we dump a whole bunch of the fund down and do a huge project. That's one of the reasons why every year the, uh, finance director, in what, October, when we do the audit, will give you the, uh, how much money is going back into your fund balance, what your total fund balance is. Because, you know, if we had no fund balance, or if money was constantly coming out of the fund balance, uh, that's a good indicator of the health of your budget. I think our budgets are pretty healthy, even though this year we're spending, you know, on paper more than we're bringing in.
And like, we do this for a fire truck, right? I mean, we put money away, and then next year, the year after, whatever, we're gonna take a big chunk of money, and we're gonna buy a fire truck. And I mean, you know.
Just wanted you to promise me you're not gonna fall.
Have I ever done that?
I thought I'm aware of, and that's. Real quick, thank you of the counsel.
And you make it so people stay alive.
Hopefully.
Our job is to just facilitate that. That's our job. So.
I'm getting mushy, but I appreciate.
And we appreciate all of you. We appreciate all of you on levels. I can't even. I, I mean, I, I've said this before, I picked this community. You know, I moved to this side, I took the teaching job, my parents were in Lakeview and I went community shopping. And. You know, that was nineteen ninety-nine.
Adam Mayor, I did put some communications in there, mostly just stuff that came my way this past week. Uh, but once, one thing I would like to defer is to Darla about the, what was it called? Reality something or other? It sounds like the kids had awesome time and Darla was part of it, so would you give them a five-second version of what happened?
So, um. Through Rotary, Cedar Springs Rotary Club, um, we discovered Greenville and, and many other communities, I'm sure do this. Uh, last November, Kami and I went to Greenville Public Schools. They have this reality store going on this day, so we kinda sat and observed. Brought it back to our school here and said, we would be absolutely thrilled to help our school put this on. Um, so Rotary funded a lot of the, uh, we bought the program, we made all the boards for all the stations, so this past Tuesday. We had probably. Twenty-five volunteers, um. Powell was one of them, um. And all eighth grade students came through, they bought a house, they bought a car, they bought insurance, they bought clothing. They had a career picked out ahead of time and a monthly salary. And at the end of the stations, they discovered, hey, you know, I didn't have enough money to buy all that, right? I did have enough money, whatever. Really, really important. Life skill.
Yeah, I love that so much. That is awesome.
Was it Kami that had the fun station?
Kami had the most fun station.
Kami, are you still there? If you are, could you pop in real quick and tell us about the fun you had?
Yes, okay, so I got to have the best station. My station was reality check. So they had to uh, draw a number. There were forty reality checks. Uh, we sent several students to the legal booth because they had. Um, tickets because they rolled a stop sign because they were on their cell phone. We had a couple that had to go to legal because they got a divorce. Um, we sent some kids down to the travel booth because they had to get an airline ticket to, for a funeral. We had several students have more babies, so they had to go back. Through the whole thing, cause they had to get a bigger car. Bigger house, more, more childcare. My favorite comment of the whole day is why is everything costs so much money?
Reach it.
Anyway, so I, I just thought that was a, a, a fun thing for the kids to do.
That is fantastic.
Obviously, they probably learned a ton and we had some great volunteers that took part in that.
Yeah, sign me up for that next time you do it. I would so do that.
It might mistake you for a student, so.
That is so rude.
I was gonna say, I think you're older than a lot of my fellow teachers now.
Really?
Yeah, my sister is a teacher.
So we'll go through department reports next time on April thirteenth. So council comments.
Um, Mr. Berenwald. I, I ran into him while during this reality store. No, he's like the uh, post-secondary success guy who gets, helps the kids get jobs and different programs like that. And I mentioned um. Him to call you about getting his kids a tour into the. Uh, sewer treatments.
Oh, water treatment?
Yes, he said he had a few people interested, so he's gonna get in touch with you for a tour.
They love to give tours.
Oh, it was a, that reality store was pretty cool. It really was. I enjoyed it. I'd do it again in a minute. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. I'm so happy. We have such a great staff. I can't even begin to tell you. But I will. You're wonderful, you guys. I love you.
Ms. Atchison?
I'm sorry I was late. I got stuck at work. Um. Uh, just a lot of stuff going on and I'm so glad that we do have capable staff. Um, we appreciate you so much. Um, we do go through it though, sometimes it's easier just to let one person explain, not double explain. And let's let the person that's. It's their uh. Job, let them explain it, cause it's easier than having to. Um. Other than that, I'm, I'm excited, you know, looking at this about all the stuff that we're trying to do for the community.
Mr. Gross?
Red ink never looks good. But in our case, we've covered it. I feel. Budgeting and so forth and the work that you have done is great. Uh, the explanations are there. Like was said, all of the staff does a super job. There isn't a department in the city that I would desire much of a change in. Simply because uh, the only change I would be looking at is being able to support them more, probably.
Yeah, but.
I believe that uh. Like was said, we have very capable people. That are running our departments, so. That's it. Some big things coming. Major costs. People are gonna begin to wonder or have wondered where the money goes. They'll see it. When it comes out like a new streets, new sidewalks, things like that nature, even those that don't want sidewalks. Or their trees cut. It is a benefit to the entirety of the community, so I appreciate it all. Thank you.
Ms. Hammer?
Um, I just wanna say thank you for putting everything together. Second year going through this and it's getting easier to understand and. Answering all of my questions.
As always, this is phenomenal and I've done a lot of budgets. Um, not, I haven't. Let me rephrase. I have been on the receiving end of a lot of budgets. I was on the library board for. Six years, eight years. I was on the school board for six years and this is year. Fourteen, I think. You are the absolute best at putting this together in a way that you can understand it. That tell it to me like I'm five, that it makes sense. That makes everything come out and it reflects. Budgets are a reflection of our values. Budgets are a reflection of your values in your home. Your budgets are a reflection of your value in your schools. Your budgets are a reflection of your values in your city. So when we spend money on our water, on our streets, on our sidewalks, on our staff, on our library, we're saying. This is what we value. And that's huge. And you put together a budget that reflects the values. Of this community. And you nail it every single time. And to me, that's just. Outstanding. I mean, I. All I got to say. So, and with that. We're adjourned.